Welcome, everybody, to the regular school committee meeting of November 19th, 2014. Calling the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. First item, as always, is the consent agenda. If there are no objections, we'll consider the warrants from November 21st, 2014, as well as the minutes from October 29th, 2014, approved. Nobody's objecting. I guess we're all set there. Moving right along to the superintendent's report.
Right. Well, we are really early for our first piece of the superintendent's report. We have Dick Sullivan here tonight for the audit presentation. George has already met with the Audit Advisory Committee, and we have another year of an excellent report. And do you want to introduce some particular comments about?
No, I interviewed the Audit Advisory Committee about three weeks ago, I think.
October 27th.
Yeah, and we spent, well, an hour with them while we was there, going over the audit. And like Michael said, in general, things seemed pretty good this year. I'll leave that to Dick to explain. The audit's been up on the site through the last week or so for you to peruse through, so I hope you've had the opportunity to do that. Yeah, I think at this point, I turn over Dick Sullivan.
Sure. And what I'll do right now is, I won't make this believe with this, but I'll just kind of walk you through what we did and give you an idea of my perspective of how the audit went. We do the audit in two phases. We come in early in the spring, and we begin to do what I call things that aren't date-sensitive. They don't have to be specific to June 30th. You have a budget that's already been done. You have any debt that's already been looked at. We also do the single audit, which means that's the part of the job that you receive more or expend more than $500,000 worth of federal grants, so we have to audit that. And we get all that stuff done before year-end. Then, we usually come in about the second week in September and do what I call the year-end audit. And that's walking down your balance sheet, making sure cash is right, your warrants payable cutoff is correct, capital assets are correctly stated, you have some teacher's payroll approval, and your bonds payable. We make sure there have been no changes, and we go through the balance sheet. Now, your balance sheet is what I would call not complicated, because basically, your only assets are cash and capital assets. I think you had about $10 million worth of cash at the end of the year, and we audit that very significantly because it's a liquid asset, it's one of the high-risk assets. Your bonds payable, very straightforward, OPEB, that's the number that, kind of like the elephant in the room, we've been talking about for a number of years relative to the payment for retirees' health insurance. The crew payroll was $1.6 million, and you had some warrants payable. What I can share with you is that when we come in, we're kind of like Marines, and we come in, we try to get in and out quick. I think it's appreciated by the school, but also, I'm a businessman, and I have to do my job fairly efficiently. Once again, I would call your team audit-ready. We work closely with Pat. She does a lot of the work in terms of getting things ready, and George. And they were ready. Your treasurer had all the bank accounts reconciled, both. We look at two months. We look at June and July, because we have to test things after the month, the year-end. And everything came out fine. For looking at your controls in terms of the design and how they work, we take four different transaction cycles. We take your payroll cycle, we take your disbursement cycle, we take your revenue cycle, and we take journal entries. And we tested about 20 each of those categories. Each one of those categories, we do for the different attributes that you would expect relative to it. You know, is the amount authorized? Is it appropriated? Has it been posted correctly? Does the invoice match? Or has it been posted to the ledger? Does the check match what the invoice says? All of those tests came up fine. I mean, we had no problem with it at all. And then you have to throw in probably another theory of social selections that we do for the single audit. So you're probably talking about 100 different random selections that we take in terms of just determining if things are working the way they're supposed to be working. And what I can report to you from my testing is they are. Looking at how your year went, I would say to you, things went a little better than anticipated. You ended up with a small budgetary surplus of $148,000. Revenues came in a little higher than expected, and that's primarily because of the transportation. You received $270,000 more, and your Medicaid money came in higher than your budget. You tend to budget that lower, and it makes sense, because you really don't know what it's going to be sometimes, but that came in higher than expected. Revenues came in at about 98% of what you expected to spend, which is a pretty good crystal ball when you think about the budget that was done over a year ago. So that was primarily the result of why you ended up with a surplus. The good thing is, you had budgeted E&amp;D of, I think, a million bucks, anticipation of potentially having to use it, and you didn't have to use it. And that's somewhat consistent with what I saw in FY13, where the surplus was about $108,000. So when you're thinking about how things went, they went well. Now, I talked about a lot of testing that we do on the side. Your budget is really broken down very easily. Almost 100% of your revenues were two sources, the state and member communities, so it's pretty easy to audit. And then, when you take in account personnel and personnel-related expenses, which is salaries, fringe, pension benefits, you probably, and then you throw on top of utilities, you're talking about 88% of your total expenses. When you really get down to it. So when I'm looking at your financial statements, not only am I looking at it from an expectation standpoint, but we do approximately 17 other school districts, so I kind of like to see the same ratios, and I saw all that, and that was fine. I didn't see any issues that are west reporting or any design issues that I thought you should be concerned with. Another activity on the balance sheet slash your transactions that was probably a little bit significant is you added about four significant assets to your asset base. It was about $408,000. You bought a John Deere tractor. You bought, you did something with a high school field concession. I think it was a $250,000 expenditure there.
Building, yeah.
Yep. Bought a Chevy Silverado. And you brought a couple of floor scrubbers, and that totaled about, just under, just over $400,000 for the year. So if I was to share with you what's in these financial statements, which I think they're about 30-something pages, 48 pages long, what I have to share with you is this was what I call a good, clean audit. And what I mean by that is, not only was our process in terms of being able to do the audit made easier by the folks, the cooperation of your folks, but your financial statements are clean, your balance sheet looks solid, your P&amp;L came in pretty much where you wanted to be. We had no issues of internal control. There were no adjustments that we recommended be made to the books, which means that the information you receive on a regular basis and on year-end was accurately stated for you. And I would call this overall, from a financial perspective, an overall good year for the district. On the other part of it, there's another report that we have. It's called the Federal Awards Report. This is the one I was talking about. It's called A133. This is the federal, the work we do with relative to your federal awards. You spent about $1.2 million in federal grant. Special education's the big one. We tested about $736,000. There's three opinions in there. All are unmodified. One is the opinion on internal controls. The other is the opinion on administrative federal grants, and the other's on the opinion relative to the presentation of your federal awards in a financial statement. All of those were unqualified opinion, which is as good as it gets in my business. The final thing is, is the management letter. Your management letter is extremely thin. And, you know, I think about sometimes, because we have clients who can have 25, 30 pages worth of management letters. And I say to myself, okay, Sullivan, are you getting stale? Are you not paying attention? And I really come across with what I'd like to share with you. I think your people do a good job. We've had comments in here over the years that we've been fortunate to be, have you as a client for several years. And each year, we bring, introduce a client, I introduce a comment or two, they always get taken care of in the next year. This year, we had two things. We asked, talked about inventory of capital assets, and we were making some recommendations, some modifications for the approval of the student activities warrant process. Both of those were implemented. So I appreciate the fact that your management team, the people that you rely on, take what we say, and again, these are critical in nature. We don't talk about the good things. We only say, these are things we think we can do better. And we're all human beings. We kind of get a little twitch sometimes when that does occur, but they are all taken care of, and they were taken care of to our satisfaction. There's another comment in there, which just talks about the future Gatsby's coming up. Not something that I think is dinner talk for you folks, but it's something that will significantly impact your financial statements, because, you know how you guys are members of, oh, shoot, is it Mental Sex Retirement System?
Worcester.
Worcester, thank you. They have an unfunded pension liability. It's significant. A portion of that unfunded liability is now going to appear on your balance sheet. It's called Gatsby 68. They're taking it on there, and where they always had it in the footnotes. It's always been there. All the information's always been there. They're taking it now, and they're putting it on the face of the financial statement, so it's not going to just be buried in the footnotes anymore. Personally, I don't think it's going to affect your bond rating at all, because the folks who do that have already taken all this information into consideration in the past. It's just a new way, or an additional way, I should say, to present information that's been there before. So summarize. Good audit, good cooperation, good information. We got in and out, and I think that if I was on your side of the table, I'd be pretty comfortable with the results of this, for this, for FY14.
So is it, are there any questions, I guess, that you have about?
Do you have any questions? On the Gatsby, that's OPEB?
That, no, that's pension.
Okay.
And just to add to that, this is coming out for FY15. Gatsby has an exposure draft right now, and I anticipate the same thing that Gatsby 68 is going to do for pensions is going to come into effect probably in '17 or '18 for OPEB. So that unfunded liability for OPEB, your portion of it will then appear again, in full, on the face of the financial statement, not just the portion of the ARC that you're not making.
So can you talk a little bit more about that, so that we all understand?
Sure. The OPEB liability is here right now. What you've got is, you've had an actuarial study done, which says that you should be paying into a trust an amount equal to the ability to pay benefits that are currently being paid right now, and that's a called pay-as-you-go, plus additional amounts in there to pay for future benefits. And it's a, it's a, it's a, it's called an annual required contribution or ARC, and it's designed the same as the pension. It's just like your pension appropriation. You only do the pay-as-you-go piece. You don't do the, let's call it the future funding piece.
We only do that now?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. You're doing it the way you've always done. Retiree health benefits are being paid as they should, but the amount, putting aside some additional amounts has not been there. And is that different?
Just for clarification, because you're probably not up on this for good reason, it hasn't happened yet, we have an agenda later on tonight to deposit a potential of $150,000, which we encumbered.
It's a start.
Into an OPEB trust. So that's what they call the future funding.
Correct. That's the future funding piece. And the idea behind it is, you have a liability on your books, which is the difference between what you should have put in and what you have put in since Gatsby 45 was implemented. And I think that came about 2000. Oh, man.
That's okay, because we're getting the gist of it, but...
The gist of it is, is that, and again, you know, the Gatsby people, I think they're, sometimes they're geeks in small, in little tiny closets. But this particular, this particular thing is real, because it's an ongoing liability that's out there based on the design of your benefit package for retirees now. And as long as that stays the same, there has to be accommodations made in some way to plan for the future payments of those amounts.
So what is that dollar amount that we...
I believe it's 20 million, but hold on a second. It's easily found on page.
And that's separate from the funding for the OPEB?
That's correct. You have $20.5 million.
That is outstanding?
That should be in a bank somewhere, earning interest for the future payment of your liabilities.
And is there any stipulation, regulation?
No.
Not yet?
I don't anticipate there being one.
All right. So this is just a forward-thinking.
Yes, yes, it is.
Be forewarned, you're going to have to ante up at some point.
What they're saying that, basically, I think the Gatsby is saying that as long as municipalities, school districts, governmental entities want to be in the business of providing retirement benefits, I'm sorry, health benefits to the retirees, they have to consider the significance of the liability, not just that annual appropriation, or what that means for 20 and 30 years down the road.
Right. That makes sense. And then what's that saying?
You make it sound like it's an option. You said, as long as we want to be in the business of providing...
Yeah. Well, it's always negotiated. Nobody says that there's an entitlement on the retiree's side to receive health benefits, but everybody who comes to work here anticipates it to be so, both at the state level, city, and town level. So until that changes, this obligation stays on the balance sheet.
Okay. And the 20.5, I don't want to...
No, go ahead.
And the 20.5 is the number that we should have today?
Today.
Not accumulate towards it, so basically, next year will be larger?
Yep. Every year gets larger.
And that's for Gatsby?
Correct.
So could you give us the same analysis for OPEB?
That was OPEB.
That was OPEB.
That was OPEB. The pension thing, you're done.
Okay.
In other words, I will say to the pension thing now, this is different. Mass General Law requires you to fund the retirement system, and you are doing your obligation. When you get that letter from Worcester County that says, this is your assessment for the year, you pay it. The county retirement system is required, under Mass General Law, to have a funding schedule that goes out no further than 2040, and they have a, I don't know if they've gone out that far, but they're meeting the Mass General Law requirement. So there's the difference when you talk about the obligation. The pension is a legal obligation in the state of Massachusetts. Not all states have it, because there are unfunded, people are not making the payments to the retirement system in other states. But Mass General Law says you have to pay it, you are paying it, so the pension piece is going to take care of itself eventually, up to a point no further than 2040 right now. It's OPEB. That's just kind of, it's more of a counting thing. It has, it has real, it's tangible, but it's still an accounting thing.
So you said that you work with about 17 school districts?
Yep.
Or school entities? And can you give us some perspective on what those other school districts or entities are doing?
Pretty much the same thing you're doing. You're talking about, was it $150,000, George, you said? That's what we're seeing. Now, I don't want to belabor it, because I think it's a very important step, but $150,000 or $20.5 million is a drop in the bucket, but it's a start, and that's what I'm seeing other people start to do. And the long-term plan for most folks are that if they can get the handle and take care of their retirement obligations, that appropriation will then be diverted towards OPEB. That's the long-term plan. In between, people are trying to make incremental contributions to their OPEB liability with the idea of not fully deferring the obligation out until this, this other thing finishes.
Yeah. So we need to make this part of our regular practice every year?
In my opinion, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And you said this twice, and I'm not sure I'm catching it. You're saying that our Gatsby obligation is going to shift to OPEB, so we're not, we're supposed to be at Gatsby yet?
No. You're meeting all the compliance regulations associated with Gatsby reporting, right now. Reporting right now.
What about actually having the money that we're supposed to have?
There's a little confusion there.
Yeah.
Gatsby, an accounting standard, that's all it is. It's just an accounting standard.
Correct.
Which is general accounting standard.
Governmental accounting standards, boards.
Okay. That's who puts that out. So that's the, Gatsby is the standard, accounting standard that was put out about OPEB. Gatsby 45, is it?
Correct.
Just to write it down on your statement, where you're writing it.
Right. That addresses OPEB. The issue is OPEB.
It's just writing.
Those two issues. It's one issue. There's other Gatsby statements, like Dick had mentioned, about other issues, like the pension thing you just talked about briefly. But OPEB is started, so to speak, the idea of funding the OPEB liability, started as a result of a Gatsby statement.
Correct. It was never addressed in any financial statements prior to, I think it was 2009.
It has never been addressed by the legislature. Massachusetts Legislature has never addressed OPEB.
Nope.
They said that any districts, towns, cities have to do this. It's an accounting standard that recommends that one does it.
That's correct.
It carries on the books.
Correct.
So...
So what, what is it about Gatsby that's being traded for the OPEB?
Gatsby defines what we need.
Well, that's what I thought.
Gatsby's a policy.
Talking.
Consider just a bunch of people over here as a board.
Yeah.
That establishes reporting guidelines for cities, towns, states, and school districts. That, that's what, that's what, when we say Gatsby, that's that board saying, we know that many entities out there provide health benefits to retirees. From this point on, this is how you're going to have to account for that obligation. In other words, you're going to have to account for it from the standpoint of, if you were funding, I'm going to use the example like a pension plan, you should be setting aside in a trust an amount equal to meet your current obligations, which is the year of your appropriation, as well as your future obligations down the road.
Right. So they're kind of doing us a favor by telling us how much we should be...
What I think they did is they actually, this, you know, sometimes those pay-as-you-go's before in the old days, where leases were kind of buried on a financial statement you didn't know about, and they said that we got to capitalize them. That's what, exactly what they did. They highlighted the issue that this is, this is a significant obligation, both current and future, that they wanted to get on the face of the financial statements so that people pay attention to it. And interestingly enough, when I hear things like, you know, Charles Oswood on DBZ Radio talking about OPEB and Gatsby 45, I'm like, this ain't going a long way, because that's what I've heard.
But so, at this point, there's no, this is just a, an FYI, you need to be aware, it's coming, it's coming.
There's no legal obligation on your part to adhere to the requirements of this.
But that does not preclude us from the responsibility that we have to the member towns to not, in five years, spring a few, many, many million-dollar...
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So in that respect, we need to start looking at funding this, especially because it's compounding every year, and the outlook is not going to get any better.
Not at all.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Dick.
Thank you much for the timing, too. I appreciate it.
So just to further my report, it's long, but I'll just briefly touch upon different things. I want to congratulate our teams, recently ending their seasons. We really had a strong finish for many of our teams, did a great job. Probably one of the highlights is certainly our girls soccer, girls' field hockey team being noted for their sportsmanship, and did a great job throughout the entire season, ending on Tuesday. Student advisory, I met with the student advisory the other day, had a great meeting. It's nice to hear from them and hear the real story of what's going on in our high school. And so it's kicked off for me a lot of thinking that I need to do in terms of the budget season. Your stools are coming, by the way, for the science lab where they should be, so that we can make sure kids have places to sit. The Chapter 70 Foundation Commission that I sit on had its first public hearing the other night in Danvers during that rain, and, but it was well-attended, had 150 participants, and went well over its allotted time for everybody to have their chance to speak, which is nice. The topics, which I think we all expected to be talking about, came out. Special education, health insurance, and technology costs are not being apportioned appropriately in the current funding formula, and they were mentioned quite regularly through each speaker. Educator salaries, which have not kept up with the rates allotted in the Chapter 70 formula, also were mentioned, as were charged school costs, it was something. There are six hearings. The next one is scheduled for December 15th in Somerset. So they are...
What are those participants, those 150 people?
Those were legislators, school committee members, superintendents, parents, different PACs, groups that are organized in various towns around funding schools, so it was quite a broad consortium of folks. We're going to be talking about my goals, the district improvement plan, the honor roll. I will be presenting the middle school honor roll tonight for a recommendation and a vote. I am not going to be presenting the high school one. We just have not figured out the technology to be able to support the recommendation that I have that's come together, so I'm going to put that off until we really can do it well. And so I'll recommend that in the spring for the following year. It just isn't coming together as smoothly as I would like, so we're doing some test server work and building that. Enrollment projections, tentatively for our December 3rd meeting, I will have a gentleman from the, from NESDEC, who's been doing our enrollment projections for the last few years, here to present how our enrollment is doing overall. And the trends, the calendar committee has begun its deliberations. We do have five parents on the committee, which is great, so we are, they are working hard. They've had their first meeting. We are starting our kindergarten planning, and we'll be reaching out to the prospective kindergarten parents and meet in December. December 2nd, we have a session planned. We'll be sending them out a notice and invitation to come to that and launch kindergarten, the kindergarten process for this year. We are working hard on the health curriculum, looking at the drug and alcohol data from the Emerson Youth Behavior Survey data from 2012. We hope to have the new survey data from last year at some time, maybe in January, I think, is what they...
Oh, yeah. It wasn't posted yet.
What's that?
It was posted two years ago in October, like...
Yeah. Yeah. So I was just told January, so we'll be monitoring that. I think, I think that it's, so I'm hoping that it'll be out. We just had an early release, and teachers worked, the majority of our teachers worked on their Atlas units, and the curriculum units, many of them are further ahead than our anticipated one unit for the year, so we're excited about that. I just wanted to announce, I have appointed Donna Lindstrom, a veteran nurse in our school district, to be our coordinator of student wellness for the remainder of the school year. Donna has agreed to do that, and one of her tasks, which is to head up the school health advisory committee, which has done so much work in the past around our bullying program, our policy around school wellness policy, and so that's a vital group. They'll be starting with a meeting in December as well. And lastly, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education just released the evaluation data from last year, the very first year they collected data. This is the first year of data, so it's a baseline of sorts. We certainly have a lot of room to grow in terms of how to administer the evaluation system, but overall, I'm very proud of where our teachers and all of our educators landed. There's still some work with the collecting of data by DESI. We have some questions about our data, for example, and we'll be working with DESI to try to clean that up. But other than that, and I know other districts have similar concerns and issues, but I think overall, the process has begun in terms of why they wanted this data available. It is specific to the school and to the district. For legal reasons, obviously, the data is not specific to teachers or specific administrators, so, but it is there, and you can find the data at that website. And that's my superintendent's report.
Any questions for Michael? Are we discussing any of these later on?
There are a number of them that we're discussing later on.
Okay.
I'm just curious about the kindergarten planning meeting. What are we telling our parents that we're offering?
So we are going ahead with the exact same model that we have now, and going forward with the half-day embedded model, and so that's what we're talking about in December.
And charging for full day.
What's that?
And parents will be paying the full day, the full day option.
They'll be paying for the full day option.
And I thought that last year was, or this year was a trial, and that we were going to discuss it before you presented it again. So you're going to review and tell us how it worked out, or something?
Well, so we're, we're looking at how it's going right now, and we've made that decision that it's working well, and it's how we anticipated it would work. We can certainly, we'll be discussing the other aspects, which is what we said we would talk about, which is the funding piece during the budget process.
No. What we said was that we would agree to this year as a trial, then look at it and discuss it, that this wasn't the, no, that, that's what the whole discussion was about when it got uncomfortable, was that this year was going to be the trial year to do the blended classroom and see how that went. But not that it was the first year in a series of moving forward without reevaluating.
I didn't understand it that way.
Did, am I, did I...
That's how I understood it.
Okay, so there must be a big disconnect here.
It would be very difficult to share anything in December if there was going to be an ongoing evaluation process. I mean, we'd have to at least go a two-year cycle to be able to do a full evaluations.
But that's not what we discussed.
I, I had tied it to the money.
I thought we had discussed that we were going to start rolling out this, introducing the idea of no more paying for full-day kindergarten. It doesn't sound like that's happening.
That's definitely-
Well, that still can happen and would be part of the budget process, but again, we're in November and December, and parents are going to be having questions. Our intent for December was to describe the current model that we have, so they know what we have. Doesn't mean that if there's at some point during the budget process, we decide to go no paying, because we're not asking for any money, that we can't change that, because that would be good news for parents who-
You mean, we're not asking for like a deposit in December?
Correct, correct, correct.
But the plan is still to be charging for this year.
We're going to talk about the existing program as it currently stands.
The existing program right now.
Pilot as it currently stands. Right.
I just think a lot of it has to be in the messaging, we have to message that in this December meeting, that this is how the, the current program is running, and-
Subject to change.
Yes.
Could be subject to change.
I think that has to be really loud and clear.
And I think someone from the school committee needs to attend those meetings.
Absolutely.
Because at the last, wasn't there a meeting in the Stowe schools where, where something was shared that wasn't accurate, and that is going to start a whole nother cycle of people getting upset? So we need to make sure that the messaging is accurate, and I can't be there if someone, where is the meeting, in Bolton?
It'll be here at the auditorium.
And when is it?
December 2nd, do we go with seven or 6:30?
We haven't yet.
We haven't, we haven't sent out the letter yet.
And how did you get the message out?
Well, we said we're writing letters to the individual parents.
Oh, it's only going to kindergarten?
Perspective kindergarten parents.
This is basically an information.
Yeah. Normally, we only send the letter out.
Right.
We want to meet with parents.
So is part of the intention of having that gathering to get feedback, or it's merely to-
It is, no, it's actually, it is, you know, we want to hear first, before we start, because I know that was some of the feedback we heard last year, so we want to hear some of the feedback, you know, if there is this large contingency of folks who want half-day, we wanted to gather that piece of information and have it first and foremost. We didn't have a vehicle for doing that last year at the beginning of our planning process, so we wanted to make sure that that was there as well. So it'll be an interactive meeting.
Just hope it's controlled.
Yeah, I would expect it to be, I mean, I think, yeah.
I guess my one question is, if, if there was a huge contingent that really wanted the separate half-day classes in all three towns, would there be the possibility of reverting back to having a dedicated half-day class in each?
Well, it'd be a funding, it'd be a funding issue, so it would have to be decided during the budget process.
But is, I guess my question is, is that even a possibility, or will people be falsely getting up their hopes if they think that that's a possibility?
I'll put that to my administrative team, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to say. I mean, I think there's, there's a strong belief by the educators that the model that we have is a good model, and it's a strong model, and it's not unique.
Right.
And so, but I hear you.
I mean, yeah, I just know that there is, there will be some people who are still resistant to this, and, you know, if, if really we're in all likelihood going with this model, and they go into this meeting thinking that they can, they can, they can get what they, what people didn't get for this year, and that's not a possibility, I think we need to, I mean, I guess we need to know whether or not that's even a possibility, or whether it needs to be stated upfront that it's, it's not a possibility for them.
I agree. I think it's dangerous to ask for input if you don't really want it. I mean, if you're going to ask for input, it has to be because you're thinking of maybe actually acting on that input.
Well, I'm asking mostly for you, to the point that I think others have made here. If there are some people here who have that question, I think it's helpful for you to have that information. Again, I think the educators feel that the model we have now is a sound model, and it's a productive model.
I don't want to pretend that we're going in and presenting it as a fact that this is our phase to full day, and not paid kindergarten. And I know people have very strong opinions about it, but I don't think it's our job at that point to use our opinions. I think this is a fact, and I think that's hard to do when you have strong opinions to not-
Right, right.
Get your opinion, but I just think that's really important, that we need to say, you know what, some people would love it to be full day, paid, but, you know, that is a whole process that needs to go through, it's not just-
Exactly, exactly.
So what's the point of the meeting? I think I'm losing those.
So the point of the meeting is to describe what our current program is, and to ask the question, because it is the current program.
It's your, it's your pilot, that's what we agreed to, it's your pilot. It cannot be presented as this is our program, because we did not vote on that, we voted on a one-year pilot.
But that's our current program for one year.
For one year, but that needs to be stated.
Right.
Right. I mean, the general sense of a pilot is that you do take feedback, you do gather input, but the general tenets of a pilot is that there's a kernel of, there's more than just a kernel of things, the general essence of what you're doing is what you're doing.
No, that's not correct, and we don't have to get into it, that's absolutely not correct. A pilot is to gather-
Your opinion may be different.
No, my opinion isn't. The point of a pilot is to gather data, and look at the data, and decide, does it make sense, does it not make sense, and will we move forward? But not to have a preconceived notion that that's where you're going, and that's what you just said, so let's leave it at you're going to gather data.
Yeah. I'll leave it at my understanding of what a pilot is, and you have your understanding of a pilot.
As long as you're not logging into a meeting with a preconceived notion of where you're going to take this program, and you're going under the guise of asking people for their input, because then don't ask them for their, for their input.
I think it's important to ask people for their input. I think regardless of what our, regardless of how things are now, we want input on how we want to move forward.
Right. So ask them for their input, but don't have a preconceived notion of where you're taking it. Don't have in your head, we're going to ask you for your input, but we're going forward anyway, even if most of the people or half the people don't like it, that's my point.
Okay.
Well, that, that's what I was saying, too, don't ask for the input if you're not really going to use it. If it's, if it's something that, that their answers to the questions that you pose on December 2nd are going to actually influence the program going forward, then it's worth asking the question. If it's not going to influence the program because it's already been determined, and I'm not saying that that's a bad thing, but if it has already been determined that we're phasing out the half-day and we're moving to full day, then, then don't ask for people to raise their hand and say, I want half-day, and then they don't get.
So, and again, at this point in time, I'm not suggesting we're yet phasing out half-day. I'm simply suggesting, and that's, that's a piece of the input I want to get from folks, so that I can inform you of where our, our general population is and where, where the interest is, because there are other factors that we have to take in consideration. While I believe very much in free, public, all-day kindergarten, there's a reality around funding it that we have to go through our budget exercises to get to, and so I definitely don't want anybody to leave that meeting thinking that it's going to be free. I don't want them to think that.
And should they leave that meeting thinking that the half-day kindergarten is going away?
Well, I don't think it could if we're not saying it's not going to be free, because we can't make it-
We can't make it go away.
Okay, so that's not one of the messages that they're going to receive?
Absolutely, absolutely.
We're still on superintendent's report, right?
I think so.
I think I was done, that was a question.
Anyone have any other questions?
Superintendent's report?
Correct.
Are we going to be talking about the MASC mapping, is that later?
That'll be a little bit later, yes.
With the high school?
No, I think she's talking about the workshops. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, okay, yes. Yes, that's BMD.
Yeah.
Under Bolton.
Okay, then let's move along to, unless you're working on, Lynn, another question?
She's showing her way.
Well, I'm just, I want to see if it's on later, like the walk through the parking lot, is that there? Are we talking about that later? We talked about it, I think, maybe.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda.
The subcommittee reports, Talia, you're very patient down there, bring it on.
A slightly lighter note. This is Spirit Week at Shova. It kicked off Monday with New England Sports Day, Tuesday was Animal Day, today was Holiday Day, tomorrow is Crazy Day, and Spirit Week ends on Friday with Fancy Friday. In sports news, Neshoba field hockey fell to action in Foxborough 1-0 to 1 in a valiant fight at WPI over the weekend at the Division One State Finals, but they did win the MIAA State Field Hockey Sportsmanship Award. Neshoba girls soccer also lost to West Springfield last night in the state semifinals after winning districts. Neshoba cheerleaders also competed at regionals over the weekend. The football team will be finishing their season on Thanksgiving at North Middlesex. We are incredibly proud of all of our teams for making it so far, and are looking forward to the start of winter sports in just a couple of weeks. Neshoba leaders recently traveled to MIT to hear the Dalai Lama speak on climate change at the SPAR conference. They also heard from George Lopez and Google's Jolly Goodfellow, Chai Mang Thong. Students have also been supporting Children's Hospital by donating new toys. Thanksgiving is nearing, and canned goods are being collected for local food banks as well. Tribute night is being hosted tonight to benefit the Booster Club. Last week, Neshoba hosted author Kami McGovern, who has written Say What You Will, and also a senior English class, went to see Juno Diaz, the author of Drown.
A simple question, what's Fancy Friday?
Actually, like, it's like casualified, but the opposite.
All right, thanks so much, Talia. Next is Facilities and Finance, Maureen?
Other than discussing the warrants and a very brief discussion on receipts from, from MIAA events, we have, we just departed the warrants.
Can we ask that question out loud about the receipts?
The question was, what happens with the receipts for the MIAA events? MIAA gets the gate, but they pay all the expenses, all the ticket sellers and the officials and the police detail, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
So we don't make any money off those amounts? Is that what you're saying?
Just concessions.
Concessions.
So the Booster Club makes money. So we pay, you're paying, but they're not, aren't they paying to rent the field?
No.
No. River organizations.
Wow. So all we get is concessions?
Yeah.
But we made about $270,000 last night.
Woo-hoo! In this particular instance, we also got a competitive advantage. In this instance, we also got a competitive advantage over this last couple of days.
Because there was a home field fighting.
Home field fighting.
Yeah.
Okay, interesting. So, since, since you guys talked about the walk through the parking lot, what is that? What's going on with the park? Does that happen in finance? So what is that?
I just have to say out loud that I had some correspondence which did not make it into the packet about somebody who was coming to the meeting to talk about that.
So you want to hold out till later?
I want to hold out till later, because I want them to not be here if they're showing up for that reason only.
No, that's fine.
If that's okay, Lynn.
No, as long as it gets on there.
So Lynn, don't let me forget about it. I know I won't. Okay, so, anything else, Maureen, where you-
That was it.
Okay. Next is personnel, we haven't not met since our last meeting. NRHS Space Study Task Force?
Needs tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, okay. Policy, Kara?
We have seven policies here that are second reading, so I don't know if anyone's read them and has more feedback for us, but if not, can we just vote on them? Or do we-
When we get to that, sorry, we'll stick to this.
Good effort.
And then the only other remaining subcommittee report is, Lorraine, you're going to tell us a little bit about the MASC, the MASC conference that you and Nicole attended?
Yeah, what did you, excuse me, yeah, what did you say? Oh, about, for the policy subcommittee meeting, one of the things we talked about was, if you want to share this.
Oh, no, you can, you can.
You sure? We talked about, we looked at, Michael brought up, you know, we've all been talking about surveys, and what are we doing with surveys, and so we talked about that, but one of the things we did discuss was adding a survey to the staff population. So right now, we survey the parents, and we survey the students, and we survey other people in the community on behalf of the school district, but we don't go to the teachers.
Well, the teachers are invited to participate in these surveys, but we don't have a specific survey that is geared toward, toward the staff.
So they participate in the district improvement survey?
District and school improvement.
But there is no survey specific to the staff and the teaching, teachers?
I think there's a lot of surveys with the NEAS thing.
Right.
Yeah. There's a lot of-
So that's great, so they've already started, and frankly, we should hear what they have to say. So if, so the recommendation is to put together, and maybe we use that as a, as that plus the TEL survey, the Mass TEL survey, use that as a short but effective survey to the staff populations on an annual basis, to see, you know, where they are, how they are, do they need something, how do they feel, and I think that the school committee really should own that survey.
And then, I think it's a great idea, what, how do we then use that information? Is that, is that discussed?
I think what, we haven't gone through the whole thing, but I think you would write it so that you were looking for, you know, what do you want to know from them, first of all, just throw some things out there, and we'll get to it, but do they feel like they have the tools that they need? Do they feel like they have the support that they need?
So I contacted somebody about goals, the head of, Michael Gilbert, the head of Massachusetts Associations of School Committees, because we've been struggling, meeting after meeting, getting through these goals presentations, and I think that they had maybe some presentations where you guys went, and there was a webinar that he instructed me to watch, 30-minute webinar on their site, and I'll share with everyone later, but it says that we should have a lot of input to the goals, it shouldn't be, it said it's usually not very successful if the superintendent drafts them and we talk about them. It's successful to either have a subcommittee or a separate meeting with the superintendent to craft them as a body, and that surveys and district improvement plans and the school committee, not the school council reports are what's supposed to feed us into the list of goals. So I think we're, that might be part of our issue there, but that survey would be great for that, to get some data, what are the needs in their eyes.
So that was part of the discussion, was we need to hear from the teachers, they're the only body that we don't specifically hear from, right? I mean, we spent a lot of money, we spent a lot of time, we put a lot of faith, they're really important, unhappy, and then also, we talked about looking at those specific surveys that we have right now, and how can we streamline those so that they're not serving multiple solutions? And I think we talked about a survey for the parents, kind of doing it twice a year, once, and Michael suggested, once in the fall and once in the spring, so that the fall data will give us some information to make adjustments where we can, and then repulse in the spring and see how, how well we perform. So, anyway, there's more to come on it, but we just wanted to float it out there and see how you folks felt about adding a specific survey for the teaching staff, teachers and staff.
What kind of a timeline are you looking at, what level of this room?
Yep.
And so, I mean, it's not that far away, so is that the type, you're talking about that step, then you need a subcommittee to, to, something like that or something?
No, I'm not saying anything about the-
We're kind of dumb ceiling together, I didn't hear about it.
I'm just saying I would like to use the survey data whenever, if ever, it is developed, if we do try to craft goals in a more collaborative way in the future.
So, you know, is this something we need to think about, or is this something that we can vote on and say, yeah, that sounds like a great idea, and we should make a committee and start? Only because time's ticking away, we're running out of time yet, so if we could make some kind of an action, it would work for me. I mean, or is it too quick for somebody, anybody?
An action, a timeline for, for doing this survey, right?
I think we're kind of, I mean, November's almost over, we need it in November.
Not November, our next meeting's December 3rd.
And then we're starting on the budget, so the budget's going to take up a lot of the time, so, and then spring will be upon us. So shouldn't, I mean, it's, here, we're talking about it, it sounds like a good idea, so is it feasible to put a committee together and say, let's give this one a go and see if it works?
So Kathy's talking about putting a committee together for building-
No, don't talk about my thing, just talk about your survey.
Oh, all right, so, are you talking about the survey?
Can I have a survey of the set of screens on?
There, as we've referenced, there's, that NEAS survey was just done from the teachers. We haven't heard it yet.
Sixty-five pages long.
Yes, but we're getting a presentation, right, and they're going to summarize it for us?
It's definitely-
I think we should hear that first.
So I think we should, we should listen to that, take it all in, and then move on to our, another survey. to our, another survey, because we had one, we haven't even heard the results of yet.
There's a ton of information.
That's, that's fine, but I'm just saying, we need to add a data component for the teaching staff.
That's kind of embarrassing that we don't have.
Exactly. That is specific to the staff to give us feedback about how well they're supported and what they have and what they need, and that should be an annual, constant thing. If you want to use, if the NEAS stuff comes back, you've seen it, I haven't looked at it yet, but if it's informative enough and it gives us what we need, great, and then, but I still think we should build it anyway?
I agree.
Right? And maybe we don't institute it, but let's have it and make it a part of the, and we have to vote on that, I would say, I would guess.
Yes, but I don't even.
I don't know if it's now or when, but there's.
Well, the survey we could design to do for this year, get the data, and then use it to do what we're not talking about, which is the goals for next year.
I think what Nancy and Julie are saying is the NEAS data.
I just think maybe we can get that information, see what else we want to know.
Right.
What we can always start with, so it's, and then just get the NEAS.
It's going to find, maybe identify for us some areas of deficiency and then that's what we bring in to more.
Right.
So I think it's, I mean, since it's already collected and already being presented to us, let's soak it in.
Which is great, but what I'd really like to see, I think what we would like to see, and I don't want to speak for everyone, is a commitment to it, like make the commitment now that we are going to on an annual basis. Maybe this year, we use the NEAS stuff, but make that commitment, because I, it would be a shame for us to all agree that we want this data and then it kind of like floats away and we don't do anything with it, and next year comes around and, well, we still haven't done it. So the only thing I'm suggesting is, if we could vote on making the commitment that we are going to add some type of a survey, or a survey specific for that body, we may use NEAS this year.
So, can we put that on the agenda for our next meeting for a vote? Because I don't think we can vote if it's not on the agenda.
That's fine, but I'd love to see it put on there.
Okay, so, Alida, can you make a note of that?
Thank you.
So at the next meeting, we'll add that to our agenda. Good? Lynn, is that good? Yeah, it works. Okay. Excellent. Where are we?
I think we're done.
Conference, nobody want to talk about the conference?
Did you guys want to talk about the conference?
Conference, there's nothing to share on the conference.
It was good, it was good. I think George showed up and that was fun. George was good. We kind of divided and conquered in some of the meetings, so you should, Nicole obviously should speak, but I think what was interesting is that there's a lot more we could do, and there's a lot of information out there and it's kind of like drinking from the fire hose, so we're moving in the right direction with the modules, because I think that those folks really get it, and that's kind of what I came away with, was we're moving in the right direction.
I, I was, I thought so too. There's like so many best practices that are thrown at you and it's kind of like going to Disney World, you can't, you can't do everything.
Right.
You have to take, you know, how you want your vacation, what it's to be like. I just came from Disney World, so, you know, these, these things that, you know, you want, you want to do this, you want to do that, implementing them, I think, you know, the training modules are going to hopefully really lead us in our, with our specific needs, you know, so we're not taking Connecticut's needs or Rhode Island's needs, even though they were so awesome, you know, how they solved their problems.
Right.
And, you know, and, and we'll be best practice.
Thank you for going. It was good. Went last year, I thought it was valuable.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No.
No, okay. New business?
Does anybody have a card that says North Carolina license plates on it?
Yeah.
It's a light rental.
Your inside lights are on.
Awesome.
Battery's not there.
Well, wait a minute, what's on the agenda before I leave?
We did have is next. I feel like we just did that.
So, this is a follow-up on what we had previously, so is that going to go forward?
Sure.
So last June, you covered, when we were doing the transfers for the budget last June, the school committee encumbered $150,000 from the FY 2014 health insurance appropriation for a possible establishment of an OPEB trust, which we said we'd get back to you, we wanted to talk to you about it. So Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32B, Section 20, allows districts, which we are, with the vote of the government authority, which you are, to establish an OPEB trust. This is actually establishing the account, okay? So what we would do is, you would vote to accept Chapter 32B, Section 20, which allows us to establish an account, a trust fund, whatever you, dedicated account, restricted account, whatever you want to call it, for OPEB money, and we would then deposit that $150,000 that you've encumbered into that account. That'd be our first deposit. Once you deposit the money into this OPEB trust account, it's committed dedicated money, it's irrevocable, you can't just take that money and spend it on something else, you can spend it on retiree health insurance costs. Given this fact, we spend over $500,000 per year right now in retiree benefits, it's not a big deal right now, theoretically, if we wanted to, we had a financial crisis of sorts or whatever, we could go into that trust fund and take it out next year and pay for retiree health insurance benefits. So right now, committing that money to the health fund, trust fund, is really not very restrictive to us, because we spend more than that in one year. You know, if we ever get up to the two, three million dollar range, then you're restricting some money, but as you heard a little bit earlier in the general discussion of it in the audit, it's a, it's a big time liability on a long-term basis. So, you know, this is a minimal, it's a minimal effort, but it makes some sense, I think, particularly if it's known to allow us to address, you know, this moving theoretical deficit, and, you know, we could have discussed that a little bit more before too. I mean, the deficit is still somewhat theoretical, remember, we've also borrowed all these years, paying a pay-as-you-go basis for this stuff. So, but, you know, it makes sense, but a lot of things make sense. It's similar like the idea, I, you know, I'm a good saver, I have my children's college tuition in the bank before they go to college, all the segregated fund away from my regular savings and stuff like that. I thought that was great, my kids were two, when they're 18, it hasn't happened, but we still made it somehow, okay? So this is kind of the same type of situation.
It's a good thing to hear.
Yeah, we're still making it, I mean, they may be paying for it afterwards too, that's what it's trying to avoid, frankly, okay? So, the theory behind this is, if you save your money right, you budget your money right for this, the day someone walks out of here retired, you have all the money you'll ever need to pay for their insurance the rest of their life. That's what this says, and that's what this is talking about. So by the time you leave, because when, as a human asset, you're, you're done, you're no longer an asset to the district when you walk out, and that's the same idea with the pension liability payoff, and the same thing too. Everything would have been paid while you still work here. So the idea is, not only do we pay your salary and your present benefits, we pay for your future benefits and your future retirement, our cost of that, while you're still working. That way, all the money, that's a true reflection of what you cost us as a, as an employee, and that's the idea behind this. Since we haven't done this for years, we have people already retired, we've paid nothing to their retirement. So theoretically, we're paying back the people who aren't retired and we haven't paid anything for their retirement benefits, and we're putting aside money for the purposes of currently funding current employees so that by the time they retire, we theoretically have all that money in the bank too. That's the theory behind the whole thing we're using to do this. That's a huge cost, a cut. So in the short term, to be able to put a little bit of money away, which came from our health insurance appropriation, into a dedicated fund, makes sense, it doesn't tie our hands really any way at all. If we're able to keep building this up over the next couple of years, we may have a half a million dollars in there, I don't know what that means. At that point, we can really look to invest that money if we want, the state has a healthcare security trust, which is much like the pension fund, it's run by the same people. We could put it in there and, you know, invest the money and maybe make some money back, because those big liability numbers that the accountant, the auditor was talking about, that, that does assume an annual return or investment return. So if we don't get that return, those numbers actually go higher. The assumption that the return is 4.5%, and just sitting in a bank account, we all know that's not going to happen, so. So this is really, this is really more of a, I don't want to say token gesture, but it probably really is at this point, a token gesture, but it's, it's still a reasonable financial gesture, gesture too, because it does have money that we could use at some future point in the, to pay for these expenses. So, if this is what the committee wants to do, which we talked about in June, what we need to make a motion to adopt Chapter 32B, Section 20, to establish an OPEB trust, and to further move to take the $150,000, which you encumbered for this purpose back in June, to be deposited into that trust. Once you make that motion, that $150,000 would be in the trust fund, it can only be used to pay the cost of retiree health insurance benefits in the future.
So we can only invest it in the state investment fund if we have $500,000?
No, I just use that as a figure, we could, we could conceivably invest less, but I'm not sure, you know, at what point it makes sense to invest $100,000.
So, once we get the 150 in, are we committing to that same loan every year?
No, we're not committing to anything. Right now, I'm not recommending, maybe take a separate vote, right now, because I'd like to do more research about it, if we, if it's interest. I'm not recommending we transfer that money to the healthcare security trust, I'm simply recommending that we keep it, which is optional of the law, in a segregated account within our own district right now. As it builds up over a period of years, an alternative investment, I think, is warranted, but $150,000, given the relative overall investment, I don't think we need to invest immediately in the $150,000, is what I'm saying. I certainly wouldn't recommend it, I'll do more research.
So if we leave it in just the bank account, and right now it's tagged as, this is what it's being used for, but we can still use it for something else?
No, we have it in a separate bank account, if you adopt this, we'd put, we'd take $150,000 from that encumbrance.
Yep.
We open a separate bank account, probably get a 12, 18-month CD to start out with, just to, you know, present the seller of interest on it, and it would be the Shoggo Regional School District OPEB trust account. And that would be a dedicated account for that money, and any interest that's earned on that money stays in that account, and that can only be used in the future for health insurance, or, I'm sorry, any type of, it's mainly health insurance, but any type of retiree benefit cost that we, we have.
Okay. And the, the total retiree benefit is totally on the tax base?
What's that?
It's, this OPEB thing, it's totally on the tax base?
No, no, our retirees pay 50% of their costs.
Now?
Yep.
So will you be putting that money into that same account that we've laid as OPEB?
No, we can only put the $150,000, they're 50%. Right now, we only, we pay as you go right now, remember, we only pay current costs right now, we don't save anything unless.
So right now, we are paying 50% of their premium and they are paying 50% of their premium, and we are paying it out of this year's budget, and so what we would be doing at some point in the future is using money from this fund to pay our 50% premium obligation for retirees, is what you're saying?
That's the theoretical goal.
The theory.
And we, we're allowed to do that, if we had a bad year, we could go to this fund and do that, yes.
Okay, so.
But we couldn't go to this fund and put it in the playground. The only thing we can do with this fund is pay retirees benefits.
Okay.
Playground for retirees.
And since, and since that's an obligation we will be having anyways, there's no risk.
At this level, there's no risk. If we're looking at over $5 million today and we got a windfall or something, then we'd have to talk a little more about that, but at $150,000, there's virtually no, there's no, there's really no restriction.
So do we need a motion to, to open this account?
We need a motion in the memo, that's why we need to make that motion.
It's a two-piece motion.
It's in italics at the bottom of the memo page.
Start to adopt the provisions.
What, to open the OPEB account?
Yeah, it reads, I moved it, it would read.
I moved?
Yes.
It's very precise, we need that language in, in the motion.
I move that we adopt the provision of Mass General Law, Chapter 32B, Section 20, to establish an OPEB trust and to further move to deposit $150,000 encumbered from the FY 2014 health insurance line item for said purpose to be deposited into the trust. And that's it? Anybody want to say something?
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Why are you opposed?
Because, I mean, not, not questioning you, just wondering.
Because nobody else is doing it. It seems like we have this opportunity to maybe someday use this money for something that we want to, but we can't, we can only use it for health benefits, and I just, I don't see any reason to ever tie our hands like that for the future.
It's not a big deal, I knew it was going to pass, it's fine, I just. I just wanted to hear.
I wanted to put my two cents.
Well, you should, you should. Okay, moving on to old business, and as Maureen kindly reminded me, I should be pointing out, because we have a very full agenda here, that we established a while ago, and part of our, I don't know, best practices or rules of governance, that, that a conversation would be stopped at the half-hour point and we would check in and say, is it worth carrying on with this discussion any longer or not? And so, Maureen's going to be timing so that we can do our best effort to get through.
Thank you for that quote.
So, that's just my little plea to, you know, remember that, we've got a lot to do.
Let's be mindful of the time and use it wisely in our discussions and not ramble and repeat and repeat and repeat, because you can get a lot discussed in half an hour if you stand on point.
And we can go longer than half an hour.
Can we do the easy stuff first?
Do you have to go in order? We don't have to go in order, if anybody has a compelling reason to switch the order.
It's just that we do have people here, oh, I know, for some specific topic.
Right, right.
No, I mean, within old business.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there are people here for this, anticipating this order, so I think, unless we have a good reason to switch it, we should stick with it.
Got it.
Okay. So, first item is a district improvement plan. Should we ask if anyone's, you have a good reason?
I think they're all here probably for the envelope.
Anybody here have the district improvement plan? Okay, no, that's fine, great, awesome.
Yes, welcome.
Oh, good. And good luck to you.
Well, I guess, Michael, we're, so we'll take it where we left off.
Okay, so, it really hasn't changed, other than I went back and tried to bring out as more clearly what the baselines are, that was the question raised by Lynn last time, so, so I've gone through that and done that in, in the goal areas. So you'll see in the last column, for example, it'll say currently at whatever we're measuring what the percentage is. I can, I can?
Well, I was just wondering for the people who may have come for this reason, they don't have this in front of them.
Sure.
Can I bring up a general thing that I learned?
Sure, please.
So, I, we've been struggling with this and having many, many hours on this, so I contacted Michael Gilbert, and he told me to watch this video, and I'll send a link out, and what I, some of it, what I learned was that, yeah, I wrote some notes. What can help with this is that the, the improvement plan comes first, and it comes from the superintendent and the principals, and that's this right here. The goals come from the improvement plan and other data sources and are a combined effort in best practices per the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, either with the entire school committee and the superintendent, or a subcommittee of the school committee with the superintendent. And the goals are a reflection of what this body believes is the goals for the year and the super's goals to get done, which is not just the improvement plan, but it's all other things as well. And specifically, we have five must-haves in the goals by the Massachusetts School Committee. We must have a goal, and it's not limited to these five, but these five are musts. We must have a goal on professional practice, we must have a goal, no, two goals on student learning, and we must- And we must have two goals on district improvements. When we judge these goals, it doesn't tie back to the district improvement plan, which is where we're putting all this stuff. It ties back to this thing called the rubric. And the rubric has four sections. And the rubric is what we input into that thing that we all went through and measured, you know, we had those choices, sometimes, always, not at all. The rubric is defined with four different things. Instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community, and professional culture. And we write a rubric for each one of our goals. And each one of these rubrics, which is tied back to a goal, is supposed to have supporting evidence that we can see. So we're a little off, because we're starting with this improvement plan, we're trying to match it up with the goals. We didn't have a cumulative conversation. And we're using the improvement plan as the rubric, where we're supposed to have a separate rubric. And there are real must-haves per this Massachusetts Association of School Committee of what the goals should include, which I wasn't aware of. So, that's what I've learned.
So based on that, the improvement plan is something we could have a substantive discussion about, but the goals may be something that we need to...
I don't know if we need to revisit what we have for this year. I'm just saying that I do think we need to have the five per must-haves. I think we should all watch the video. But I think us putting all this detail with these indicators of a success into this improvement plan is really not where we're supposed to be putting those. Those are supposed to be the rubric, which...
Well, that was our collective idea. That wasn't how it started.
Okay. Well, whatever happened, happened.
We just asked you...
We're supposed, this is what was put in, I believe, last year into that computer system. We were using these initiatives, and we were judging off of these initiatives. And that's, that's really not what I thought I learned. And we'll all watch the video, and maybe I'm off a little. But what I learned is the rubric is what you're supposed to put in there, not the improvement plan.
And is this, do we have to be following this to a T?
Yes.
We do.
It's what we're supposed to be doing. And that's, it's the same evaluation plan that we're supposed to be doing with the... This is called the superintendent's evaluation plan. And it was discussed when I went to my training last year, but I was such a mea fey, I didn't really get it. It kind of all, when I was watching, I was like, oh, I kind of remember that from a year ago. But...
But that's what it is that I sent you.
But that's, that's...
Yeah, now that's a presentation. We're talking about the district improvement plan, and now you're talking about the superintendent's evaluation. I'm so confused.
But when I, when I looked at this initiative, when we were talking about this, we kept trying to tie it back to goals, and we kept talking about the evaluation. It all got big, it was muddled mess, if you ask me. Like, that's why it felt like it kept going on and on, because every time we would start talking about the initiative, it was like, well, how does this tie back to the goal? And how did, how are we going to, and if we're judging you in the evaluation? So, isn't the initiatives here what we had to check off last year in that...
These become, these become the evidence that you use to measure the progress toward the standards.
Evidence and rubric is where I'm getting confused. Like, when we go in, we have to, there's five choices, sometimes, always. Does that mean judging evidence, when you say?
Right.
So that, to me, when I saw the presentation, is the rubric, and it doesn't have to be perfectly aligned with the initiatives of your district improvement plan. It can be based on the goals separately.
Correct, correct.
But last year, this is what was put in, I believe, the initiatives, was the rubric.
The rubric is just the scale...
The scale.
That you, that everybody has, as a teacher rubric.
There's a, there's a rubric, and then there's a scale. Because the scale is though somewhat, sometimes... The rubric is, was described with having evidence for instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community, and professional culture.
Those are the standards.
Those are the standards in the rubric, and you decided to, I believe, locally, right, to measure with those always, sometimes, whatever.
Right.
But those are, even the answers are standard, right out of the book.
Yeah.
Okay, so this rubric is slightly different, I'm not familiar with the superintendent rubric as much. But the rubric is part of the overall evaluation system for everybody. That's those standards, that's the descriptions that you're talking about.
Right. So the goals, but this, so just so we're clear, when we've been sitting here, meeting after meeting, about the district improvement plan and wanting to have indicators of success, it was because I thought people thought we were evaluating you against the initiatives.
No, I thought that it was totally, although they're tied somewhat... If we're going to have a district improvement plan, we need to have some rationale for why we've picked this goal. And we need to have some, some way to measure whether we are making progress towards improving, because we said this is something we need to improve on. It would be nice to have some tie-in between the superintendent's evaluation and his goals and et cetera, et cetera, and the district improvement plan, because his job is to run the district. So, that's sort of how I...
What do you think about the idea of, once this district improvement plan is to everybody's satisfaction, I don't know when that's going to be, then we, then we bump it to the Personnel Subcommittee and say, okay, now, help us as a larger community, as a larger committee, to take this district improvement plan and turn them into tangible goals on his evaluation.
I think that's great.
Because I think it's a really cumbersome way to do it in this big room. And that's the point of the Personnel Subcommittee, is they're supposed to be doing things like evaluations.
I don't like that idea, because I'm not on this Personnel Subcommittee, and I want to be included in it.
Okay.
So, I don't know, and I'm not saying I don't like your idea, I'm just saying I don't like it because I want to be included.
And it wasn't saying that in a means of excluding anybody.
Right, right.
I was trying to make it less...
Well, because they're everybody. No, understood, understood.
We'll still go back to the full committee, yeah.
We will come back to the full committee. As you know, subcommittees never do anything without everybody's approval. I mean, just like we're going to review the policies that you guys have already reviewed in policy. But I don't want to twist your arm or exclude you from that process, if that's something you want to do.
Okay.
But don't you think that maybe the MASC thing on goal setting would be beneficial if we go and do that?
I absolutely think it would be beneficial, yes. And, well, we're not there on the agenda yet, but we found out a few things, and it'll lead to correcting me in places if I'm wrong, that there are these different workshops that are roughly two hours apiece, the workshops. We can't do them in the next two weeks, but we could probably set them up for after that. I have a conference call scheduled with Dorothy, who manages this process, on Friday morning at 8:30, to try to get more of a handle on what modules, what workshops we should be doing, and when we can schedule them. Well, I mean, I don't know. Do we want to spend, you know, 15 hours, or, I don't know.
Just five, so 10 hours, yeah.
No, you can, no, no...
Well, there, some of them are over two hours.
Yeah, so she said, because we talked to her, and she gave us dates that she's available, that can you throw out, and you can talk to her on Friday about, but...
Okay. Dates to come here?
Yep.
And times?
Yep.
Okay.
And she said it really doesn't make sense to do more than one at a time, because the idea is, you get the overview, and then you're able to put it into practice. And then you go back and you do another one, and you put it into practice. And so we, Nicole and I talked to her together. And one of the things she said was, is there a way for us to go out of order? And she's like, yeah. And I said, because right now, we're kind of in betwixt and tween in some of this work, and I'm sure everybody would like to see it move forward. Could we jump to that first? She said, absolutely, and she could come this early as Saturday, if we wanted to do that. But we can talk about that after.
This Saturday?
Yep.
So I guess that's something else we have to figure out, is if the sequel want to come in on a Saturday?
And everyone doesn't have to be there.
I'm fine.
What?
Uh, no. So, when you talk to her...
Do we need to discuss this now, or can we discuss this on...
We can discuss it later, but she did give us a bunch of dates, so...
Okay.
Well, with that said, I mean, if we're going to sit down with her and talk about goals, does it make sense to wait on this?
The district improvement plan?
Yeah.
How does that mess up the process for starting a budget discussion?
Well, it's important to have these in place for the budget conversation, because we can, we'll go very far without goals driving the budget.
So, when do you, when do we have to have approval on this?
I mean, absolutely, is by the Christmas break, so that we can finish the budget.
We can definitely get the MASC workshop set up before Christmas. I mean, that was the feeling I got from...
Yeah, she said November 22nd, December 10th, 17th, or the 13th, so...
And are those different days of the week?
So, the 13th is, the 10th and the 17th are off weeks of our cycle, our meeting cycle, our big meeting cycle.
The 17th, we have a meeting.
Seventeen, fifteen.
Oh, so maybe it was the 13th.
So those weeknights, it would be night or day?
Night. She said she would accommodate whatever we needed. And she was, I was kind of surprised at how accommodating she really was. But you're going to talk to her Friday morning, so you can review all that with her.
Right. So, but it would be nice, prior to that conversation, if I knew when you guys wanted to have them.
Well, what I'm wondering is, I know that Tukey can't make it on Saturday, but, I mean, if you can get a subcommittee on Saturday to start, I mean, we've been doing this for a long time.
You mean this Saturday?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if enough people can go and sit down and find out if we're heading in the right direction, or if we're even doing it.
I would probably pick the off Wednesday night myself.
We wouldn't be able to post it. If we firm it up on Friday morning, it wouldn't be allowed to be posted. We wouldn't meet the requirements.
Well, let's say, she's already agreed to do it on Saturday, so it's just have to be put forward now.
It's, well, does this work?
We're going to miss the poster. Well, that's a lot of it, but...
I will point out that we're halfway through our half-hour, and we seem to be going way off the topic of the district improvement plan, because now we're talking about the MASC workshops.
Right.
To do the district improvement.
There are two issues here. One is doing the workshop, one, the other is applying what you learn in the workshop to the district improvement plan.
But if I heard correctly, it was to teach it to you, but then actually do it. So actually, we'll help walk you through it.
I mean, I don't know how, I don't know how realistic it is, I mean, to redo this whole thing. It might, it might just be the word. You know, it might, it might be there. I don't know. I don't know until I listen to it.
This is just my opinion. I don't know if we should, more or less, just finish up this document and try to focus more on the goals document, and try to get that more.
But we own this, you know we own this.
I know, but it's like, it's just like, we're in Disneyland, you can't do every ride. You have to pick the rides you can do, so, I don't know. I'm just saying...
This isn't fun.
Well, break time.
I'm going to go out on a limb and say that I think it would be valuable, before we tonight approve this district improvement plan, that we have the workshop first. And, and maybe we're going to find out that, you know what? What we have is pretty darn good. Or maybe we're going to find out that we really need to do this, this, and this, to make it...
Better.
Better, yeah. And then we do that.
I like that.
So that means tabling this discussion for tonight. And try, and on Friday morning, I'll hopefully set up a time, hopefully on a Wednesday evening, when we're not already meeting, because Wednesdays, I think we've established, are the best for the most, greatest number of people.
Yeah.
And pick a Wednesday night that they can do it, and come here in this very room, and have a two-hour workshop, and find out, find out how we're doing.
Great.
Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Lynn?
No, it's fine, I just...
I think it sounds good, Lynn.
If that's fine.
I?
It sounds good.
Okay. Then that's what we've got to do. And I will send out an email on Friday, when I learn exactly when she can do that particular workshop, so everybody can get it on their calendars sooner rather than later.
Did you want to check on Wednesday's, he was available for what date you're talking about?
We don't really want to do that right now.
If we're tabling it, can we just move it to D, and move on with the other things we're doing?
Okay.
But, but the problem is that it...
Yeah, but we have to, what you're saying is, can we discuss the date?
The people sitting here waiting for honor roll.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is right in front of you.
So it's not being tabled for another time?
No, 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 just get... So, can we just clarify? Can we do the same thing for the superintendent's goals?
Yes.
Wait till after the workshop?
Yes.
Okay. I, I think that's smart, because if we're going to learn something about one, it's going to have an impact on the other. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
And we do have a citizen here who came to talk about the district improvement.
Are you dissatisfied with our conversation?
The workshop be open to... Yeah, it should be open.
It's a public meeting.
I think it's a public meeting, so you could come and join us.
And I can contact you to get the date?
You'll get it on our website.
And what's the title of the workshop? The whole school?
I don't know yet, it'll be something, it'll be...
Well, have MASC in it.
MASC will be in the title. That's Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And they're running the workshop. Okay, that moves us along to honor roll. Michael, do you want to...
Sure. So, as I said during my superintendent report, due just to trying to build the recommendation for, using the technology for the high school, we're not there yet, and so I'd like to pull that off, the recommendation tonight. So, my recommendation for tonight is just for the middle school. And so what we would do is have the three areas of recognition, honors, high honors, and highest honors. You see them there, here. And there would be no Cs, Ds, or Fs included for those, for those recognition areas. And we would have, for middle schools, the students must have M for meets, or I for inconsistently meets, under the social behavior and work efforts, to be considered eligible for any one of these. And we would have the middle school and related arts courses averaged in as a single course, so that no one related art would hold them off the...
Okay, so you could have a C in art, and, but as long as you are average of all your...
All your related arts.
Classes.
You would make a B. Correct.
So what are those classes?
Art, music, gym, health.
Tech.
And tech. And identical at all three middle schools.
Can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
Is it... I'm just wondering, in eighth grade, there's Algebra I. So, it's just straight, it doesn't matter what object we're hearing?
Correct.
Is this a discussion on this?
Yes.
This is a discussion?
Yep. So, if, I'm just, if we're trying to make it more consistent across the board, art, music, gym, in the high school are non-levelled courses. I know, I know, but if we're trying to make it consistent, those don't count towards your honor roll.
Currently, they don't, correct.
But in middle school right now, they do.
Correct.
So, someone could have straight A's and have a B average in music, art, and gym, and not make highest honors.
Correct.
But in high school, they could, because those are non-levelled classes. So, if we're going to make it consistent, the non-level classes are non-level classes. I know we don't call them non-level at the middle school, but technically, those are the same category as our non-level classes at the high school.
They don't get any more weight.
They don't get, right. But the non-level class really don't count towards your GPA at all in the high school.
Yeah.
District core classes.
But I thought they must, they don't... But I thought they must, they don't.
Non-level classes, what, like music and art?
Art, business.
They have, they have.
Graphics.
They'll, they'll count toward their unweighted GPA at the high school.
Don't they, they don't count towards the weighted GPA?
No.
No. They just count towards the unweighted GPA. Seriously?
I believe so. I have to, I'll go with that.
I don't think, I don't think they count at all. I think when I just had to submit grade psychologists, they took the four.
Right, the five.
The five classes. And that's it. And even if you got straight As and three other courses that you're taking for six credits for the year, doesn't matter.
Right.
When I calculate a kid's GPA, that's how I do it.
Yeah, that's not our doing. That's the college, that's the college model. That's not how we're doing it.
But that doesn't, but when we calculate our GPAs, we calculate the same way as the college does.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Yeah.
They all.
I had, I had.
Everybody does. All the high schools do it differently.
All the high schools?
Our high.
Different colleges?
Our high school. Our high school GPA is our, is the same GPA.
Does somebody know the answer to that question?
You know what I mean? I mean, I know we have weighted and unweighted.
Right.
But say I have a kid in all CP classes, they get straight As, so they technically don't have a four-point O because, unweighted they do.
They do.
Right?
Yeah.
Right.
But what if they have a C in like business and a C in graphics? Does that bring their GPA down?
Okay.
I'm just, my thing is if you're not going to count the, the non-level classes in the high school, the music, art, health, the non-core classes in the middle school shouldn't count either. Just be, I'm sorry, but we have a huge discrepancy in Lancaster with straight A students not making the honor roll because of art, gym, or health.
Okay, but if, I, I would say because they are required, they are effectively core courses for middle school, I really, I, I think taking them all as one so that it, getting a, a D in art because you slack off and do absolutely nothing is like getting a D on one test in one of your core classes. If you're getting As in everything else, you're still going to have a good average for your.
But you're not going to get high honors. You have for your core classes.
Highest honors, right.
Highest honors, you're not. Because you're not necessarily that good in, I just think art is subjective. And you could try your butt off, but if you're not that good at it, you're not that good. It, I believe it takes some natural talent to be a really good artist, musician, whatever. Some of it can definitely be learned. But, you know, if you're just not that great at music, you can't read music, you've never been in the band or anything, and you're getting tested on that, and you just don't do well in it. And, you know, you're getting a C, but you're trying. But everything else, you're getting an A, but and then, but the things in high school are required. You're required to take an art. You're required to take a technology. So, you're required to take. So, I mean, just because they get to choose what they are, doesn't mean they're not required.
Right.
So.
And in the proposal for the high school, they would count toward the honor roll.
But you don't get, in middle school, you don't get to choose to not take art. That, that's what I mean.
But you don't get to choose not to take an art, two credits of art in high school. You just get to choose which art to take.
And when to take.
You can take computer graphics and power.
Yeah, but should you be, because you have an option of what, you know, to say I might be better at singing than note taking. You know what I mean? I just.
Quite honestly, I feel like we're agonizing way too much over.
I just think it should either be one or the other. Either they, all classes count in the high school and the middle school, or they don't.
Right. And if our proposal, all of the courses count at the high school.
Are you going to do the same thing and average them together?
Uh, that is, that is not the plan for the high school.
So then it's not going to be.
Wow, what a so over-engineeredness. So why are we talking about just the middle school tonight and not the high school?
This is too complicated.
The high school does all of their grades with Power School. And because the recommendation for Power School, for the high school is to use weighted GPA, the Power School, for some technical reason which I can't explain, can't recognize and add them together the way we want them to add them together. So.
So assuming that we will approve that weighted GPA plan.
That's right. So that's a separate conversation. We can't tie together.
On a different topic, this is an academic, this is an academic recognition, correct? So why is social behavior and work habits part of the?
Okay, back in the old days, kids got a homework grade. And you could get, remember that whole explosive discussion we had last year about homework in the middle school being counted as part of your grade? And that was eliminated because it's now in the habits of the mind. So, back in the old days, you never did your homework, you'd get dinged for that, and your grade would be lower, and that would affect your, your overall grade for the trimester. So now we're saying, well, as long as you're putting in some effort, you're qualified. If you do absolutely nothing, which is, which is the never meets it, then that's kind of like if you had a fifty percent of your, your grade and a class was your homework grade and you were getting a zero on that.
Yeah, but.
But if it's not anywhere.
And that, you know, the kid's getting an A in everything.
Yeah.
With or without his homework. I mean.
And it's likely would be right inconsistent. Is that what the kids?
I understand, I, I understand that it would be very rare that there would be a does-not-meets that would make the honor roll. But it just seems like a, you know, you're kind of just asking for it. Is, is this in fact a academic recognition, or is it just, you know, an all-around good student?
This is good and amazing. Well, I think it goes back to the question, what's the honor roll for?
Yeah, what is the honor roll for?
Maybe we don't even need an honor roll in middle school.
Or at all.
Or at all.
Or high school.
Because if this is, if this is actually what, if this is our incentive for good grades is to get your name in the paper, then we need to relook at what we're doing. Because if you're not engaging the kids and making them interested in finding something else for them to feel better about their grades and wanting to achieve, if this is it, this is pretty low.
Should we take our public comments, like if people are here?
Okay. I feel like there's a lot of unresolved things. But if anybody would like to chime in, if you're here for this discussion, feel free to, at this point, we're discussing the middle school honor roll and not the high school.
Correct.
And I have a feeling that probably people are here to discuss the high school honor roll. So that might be frustrating, but.
I'm happy to talk about middle school.
Okay.
So Kathy O'Keefe Stowe. I've written to you many times, and I know you probably know what I look like. Two things. One, I believe the reason that we are combining the RAS classes into one grade is because they don't meet every single day, like math and science.
Makes it a whole class.
Right, so that makes it a whole class. And at the high school, when you have a two-credit class or a four-credit class, they do count differently. But back to middle school, so I feel very strongly that the habits of mind should not be our criteria. I would argue the rare students that get a seldom for habits have a reason that they're getting it. And if they're getting an A in the class, or B, that, you know, you're discounting it. And if you can get an A plus or an A or a B in math and not turn in homework every day, it doesn't mean that, number one, it doesn't mean you didn't do the homework. It could be in your locker, it could be at home. Or maybe you know the material, so why, why penalize you?
Yes, can I ask a question? Are the habits of mind universally measured by all teachers?
We are working toward that. They are using the same standards, and they're working towards the same protocols.
And are there, in addition to honor roll recognition, are there also academic recognition? So, for example, highest GPA in math, highest GPA in writing, or most improved, aside from the honor roll recognition?
At the end of the year, they have academic awards.
Right.
By class.
By class.
Right, yeah.
So someone will get the English award or the math award or something like that.
It's different in each middle school for those individual honors.
No, the high school does.
Yeah, the high school, but.
That would have been nice.
Sawyer.
Well, the high school's wacky.
I mean, it's, but anyway.
You. So there, in those awards, they're, it's given by class, literally. So there's a CP English award, there's an accelerated English award, there's an honors English award. It's the.
In every grade.
In every grade.
And this thing's done at the end of the year.
That's only at the end of the year, correct.
At the high school. And there, it's just our own little thing that nobody, I don't know if any other school does it like that. I've, I've never heard of it before.
It's okay. It's nice to get the phone call.
It's nice to have a teacher on the phone.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Teresa Magnuson from Stowe. I have a lot to say about the high school, but obviously you're tabling that. One of my questions about high school though is, I know originally you had a group that was, that anyone could come to. I couldn't attend those meetings. Like, one of them conflicted actually with our school council meeting at the high school. Is that still open? Do you still have that committee?
Those are two different forums that I held. And so that went, led to input. And actually, they both, this document got tweaked after each one, so.
Okay.
It's helpful.
So is there any way to still participate in any of that?
If tonight is the vote, this is your last chance.
Well, this is middle school vote tonight, right? Not high school. But I'm talking about the high.
And your high school, your correspondence, we've all seen.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's on our packet.
Yes.
Okay.
So you have had input.
In a high school level.
Okay. Well then, let me say about the middle school, which I, I have very different feelings about votes. I think the big question that really needs to be looked at is, who are we trying to satisfy? Why are we doing an honor roll? Is it doing it for the parents, so they can have bragging rights? Is it doing it for the students? I think a lot of the times, students are aware that it exists, but I think the majority of the time, depending on what level you're at, they have no idea. They don't read the papers, they don't, you know. I, I really hope that when you're taking into consideration what you're doing, that you're really looking at the purpose of it, and that whether or not it's a benefit to the students. Because I think there's other ways of recognizing students that doesn't have to be their name on the paper.
Any ideas? What's that? Any ideas?
Well, I've had two, two kids go through middle school. I don't ever remember seeing any sort of weekly or monthly recognitions given out for anything.
Golden has them.
That's what?
Golden Eagle Awards.
Golden Eagle Award and they had the star.
Yeah, the Sawyer Stars.
Sawyer Stars.
But that's not academic. That's behavioral and.
Societal and communal.
Yeah. So, and you know, that could very well be different now, because I've had kids that have gone back in time.
So, can I just throw this out? And this is, in my opinion, why we're even having this discussion in the first place. I, I think we got to a point with our middle school honor rolls that, my concern with them was that we were making the kids feel bad who didn't get on them. Because we were like ninety percent were on the honor roll. So those poor ten kids out of a hundred didn't, didn't get their name in the paper. I don't even know if they read the paper or if they even care. But it's still just kind of a yicky message to be sending that, oh, almost everybody's on the honor roll. So we started saying, well, let's try to make this a more meaningful or useful designation, if, if we can. Or maybe we get rid of it altogether. But I personally think in the middle school, we don't need it. I think we need it in the high school. I'm a college counselor, and I have a lot of kids who get to put honor roll as their only honor in their honor and award section in their college application. And I don't want to take that away from them. So I want there to be an honor roll in high school. I think it's valuable and useful. In middle school, I don't think there's any use or value to it.
I think in high school, it's, it's more of, they're more worried about it too. Who made it, who didn't. There's more discussion. And I remember having kids in high school worrying about who's going to make what, and I don't, I have three in high school, and I don't think one of them has even asked after this quarter. I'm sure they know if they did or they didn't, but there was no discussion whatsoever. And I think it's just the nature of the age in middle school.
And you know what? That, that raises a really good point, and it dovetails with what you just said. You know, I never even really thought much about it, but at this point, I'd say, if you're looking for votes, I don't think we need to have an honor roll at the middle school. And I'm sure that's an inflammatory statement. But if the.
I just said.
But, you know, if the honor roll, to Teresa's point, is, if it's for the student, but the students aren't really aware of it, it's really the parents who are reading the paper who tell the students, who talk amongst themselves, then what, what are we doing?
I feel strongly that we could do without the honor roll at the middle school. And I felt that way for some time. I think honestly, a lot of things have been said that are what happens. I mean, a large majority of students get their name in the paper, so to speak. And I do feel, you know, not so much, you know, I'm not saying we always have to go with everything is a trophy approach that we always talk about, but I do feel that some of you guys, it is exclusionary in ways that maybe are not a hundred percent fair.
At that age.
At that age, right.
But what about the kids who do do wonderful and try really hard?
And that's the argument. I mean, they're just, I'm not saying my point is right. I mean, there's definitely an argument to that point. And I think, and that's the second part of what I was going to say, actually. So I think, so, so that's my opinion dealing with it overall. I think that the people who we do exclude, I think, you know, I, I think there's, there's a counterbalance to what you say. But having it said, just through our school surveys, scientific or not, we have, I've asked that question on several years, as to whether people support it. And frankly, overwhelmingly, the response is they'd like to keep the honor roll. So that's why.
The parents would like to keep the honor roll.
No, that's, that's who's answering the surveys.
I think it's like you got rid of your honor roll. What would you replace it with?
Well, I mean, I think that's a very good question. And I think, I can speak for Hail specifically, but I think I heard something about Sawyer, and I know Burmex is similar too. You know, we have looked at more recognition programs like that. We do a student no month program, more social community than academic for sure. But, and we, and I think we can look for other recognition programs to do some of the things that we're talking about.
Well, I don't think we can get rid of it until you come up with a solution.
Well.
I don't think it has to be.
We have to step into the.
We have a hand.
I just wonder, in terms of like, if you were speaking about replacing honor roll with student achievement awards, has, is there a current practice in any of the schools around like a most improved student? So if you're thinking about that ten percent that is, feels a little bit excluded, is there another award that they could strive for aside from excellence in math or excellence in literacy?
I don't think they're really, really.
They did that at eighth grade, eighth graduation last year.
They do it. So once a year though.
My husband. That was the first time I've ever seen them.
Sawyer does that too.
Really?
Yeah, we have a full program. Sawyer has a full program.
And then there was improvement. And there was a whole, there was a good amount of awards, but people were recognized for effort and it was cumulative. Some of the awards too were a three-year cumulative award.
And are any of the awards offered tied to the habits of mind?
Ours aren't.
I think that one must.
You think they are?
Well, informally.
There's, there's a couple of them.
I mean, a teacher's vote.
The habits of mind is just ran this year too.
But there's definitely something by the whole student, not just the academic.
Correct.
Right. But then there's definitely.
But then there's some, there's a math award, there's an English award, and those are academic.
Right. And then there's definitely a handful of the, you know, most improved.
For most effort.
So what are we talking about? What do you want to do regarding that?
Well, I think it's a very good point that we need to recognize our academic achievements in some way. Is this the right way at the middle school? We're not sure. But also to the point that, yes, high academic, but also effort, because I know that you can work just as hard for a C as you can an A. You know, it depends on the kid, so.
Absolutely.
So.
It was like Kathy.
Yes, yes. So Fowler Middle School in Maynard, if you make the honor roll, you get a letter sent to your home, addressed to the student from the principal congratulating you on your hard academic work. And I believe if you get like a perfect score on MCAS, you get a letter sent to your home, but they don't send something to the newspaper saying, you know, Nicole got a hundred on her MCAS test. But I've seen letters posted in people's houses. So it's certainly something that, you know, they take to heart and that they feel good about. And that's something personal, like nothing against the newspaper. It's not like I've.
That's nice. That's private recognition. And I like that.
And it's personal. It's recognizing you, not, hey, let's recognize ninety percent of the school. So it's, you still have the honor roll, it's just nobody else's business. Like, I guess you could show everybody the letter posted on Facebook if you really want people to know, but.
Be the person who puts it in there.
I think it's recognizing the students, and it's rewarding, it's giving it to the students, not the parents.
Well, the recognition, but you don't really need to have the honor roll to get the recognition.
Well, I mean, yeah, they can look at your report card.
Yeah. So do you want to vote on this?
Well, I was going to say, we were supposed to be voting tonight, and I think we should, and. And see what happens.
So, we're voting to keep it or not to keep it? Because I'm wondering if we should-
Approve this one, right?
No, we're voting to approve the recommendation.
If we approve this recommendation, the middle schools will keep their current situation, I would assume.
Until we-
I would assume so also. But that then eliminates, I mean, somebody could make a motion that we eliminate honor roll altogether if they want.
Well, I don't think, I mean, I'm wondering if we can get the middle school principals to get together to work on a typical achievement recognition program. So it's typical across the board and it's, you know, at least they're all on the same page. We have a high school. So, is it some way to work on that? And if that is something that people can move with, then we can talk about getting rid of the honor roll. I mean, I don't think you can just, it hasn't been out there that we're ever going to get rid. Nobody's ever said we're going to get rid of it. So if you vote to get rid of it,
Right.
People are going to be upset.
Right. So maybe a part of this motion is that we move to accept the recommendation as proposed. And if not, we stick with the existing system.
I can't accept the, that piece.
The second part of what she said though was to just keep the existing system. It was a two-part motion.
Well, can we accept it but not have the habits of mind?
Then that's a different proposal.
Then that's a, right.
Yeah, but you can make addendums.
Because that actually impacts my vote personally. Because I'd rather have this than the existing system. I'd rather not have anything, but.
See, I would take this without the habits of mind.
Is it a motion?
You could make that motion.
Okay.
I don't, I don't want it.
But you want to keep the third one?
So somehow we, how is this-
There's no option for that vote right now, unfortunately.
It's different in each group.
But why not?
Why what?
Can't wait. Why, why can't?
If somebody wants to make a motion, that, I mean, Lynn just said we can't do that.
Well, no, no. Well, I guess we'll get a phone call.
I know.
Why don't you want it? Why don't you want to take the proposed?
Because I think, well, first of all, I don't like the habits of mind included in it.
Yep, I want that going.
Because if a student is doing exceedingly well academically and they have behavioral or whatever issues, that may be the only thing that they're doing well, that they're getting recognized for. Don't take that away from them. Okay, that's one. The second now, I've got myself off course because I went down that path. But I don't know that we really need to proliferate at that age divisive things. And I think it's divisive. I think that the, I think that the honor roll in its current form is a social tool. And I don't believe it's an academic tool. So, in that respect, when it's in the paper, when it's in the newsletters, when it's in other places, it becomes more of a social tool than a teaching and a reinforcement of academic tool at that age. Once you're in high school, you kind of hopefully have moved beyond that stage. But I hear what you're saying. And if there was a way to say, yeah, you know, trust the administrators to get together and come up with, what other thing could we institute across the district that isn't an honor roll, that is rewarding in some other way? And maybe it includes behaviors so that kids who aren't, you know, getting all As or have never gotten an A, maybe have never gotten a B, have a chance.
I find much more value, I think, in this, than in teachers' comments than the little thing on the bottom that said your student made honor roll.
In the middle school.
In the middle, well, actually in any of it.
I know, but at least, certainly in the middle, in the middle school.
I just, but I think that's where you would get-
I don't think they really fill those out though.
You get like one at-
I do.
We don't.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that, you know, instead of the, I mean, not more on the teachers, but a little comment of saying, you know, your kid is amazing in this class and he should really be an mathematician. You know, your kid might have a C on here, but he is the hardest working kid in my class. Like, as a parent, because I really think, we kind of think that the honor rolls-
But now you're back to, this isn't for the kids, it's for the parents.
Well, I don't think it is.
Uniforms with the kids.
Well, and I think in middle school, it's exactly what it is. It's, you know, I made the honor roll, did you make the honor roll? You didn't make the honor roll? What you got? Yeah, I just, I hate just middle school. It's so hard already to add one more little competitive piece to it that I'm up for.
Yeah, but there's still a lot of learning that they don't talk about.
So I think if you put the administrators together and task them with it. I mean, George, you've got insights. And I'm with you.
Should we load up tonight and then they can go?
But why do we need to float this trial balloon if?
Well, it's just never been out there that we were going to vote to get rid of the honor roll.
Right.
It just hasn't.
It feels a little bit like our kindergarten situation. To be honest, I mean, we've got to be consistent about-
That was a very good analogy.
It's never been floated.
Can we ask a teacher?
Absolutely. Karen, it's here.
Karen, can you weigh in?
The only thing that I can say, I'm a PE teacher at Sawyer School. And-
Yay, Sawyer, go ahead.
Karen, that'd be lovely.
I don't even, I remember ten, fifteen years ago worrying about honor roll, worrying about giving an I or an N because it affected the kids. I don't even think about honor roll at that age anymore. I don't think it's made public in the school. My son at that age, you know, like, he didn't make it all, you know, he didn't make it that often. So, I, I don't know, like you say, you know, if a kid, if a child comes home with straight A's on the report card, the parents are seeing that, that's awesome. So, I haven't really been thinking about this much and I, I don't know. But I do know that the habits of learning, we put a lot of work into assigning those to each student. And they have to be pretty off to get the lower grades. Even to get an I, it has to be sort of something that's a reoccurring misbehavior or whatever. So, yet, it would be okay to me if they still made honor roll with that because they were doing everything else right. I don't know. It's, like you say, it's a new thought to get rid of it.
Sure.
Not speaking as the newspaper. Totally not. I have triplets in middle school plus another one.
George Joseph.
That's all.
And my triplets that are in sixth grade do buzz about dishonor roll. Because I think, I do believe the kids talk about it. And I've got four of them, they do talk about it. The girls really talk about it. And it's my two boys who don't have a chance of making it. But in their minds, somehow they think their name's going to be on there. Because when it's in the paper, everybody's on it.
Everybody's on it.
So I've actually thought, wow, how am I going to talk to them about this when they're going to be one of the ten kids who didn't make it? And they're not going to make it. I don't know how it's going to be. My daughter's fretting every night about how many weeks are left in the marking period or whatever. She's with the little social group of girls who are going to look for their names right away. So, I'm not going to say my opinion either way. I've listened to both sides. I hear what Cheryl's saying. I would love for other types of recognition to be out there. I agree that it hasn't been out there yet. And the people, there are parents just waiting to see that name. So, I don't know. Because I have two that'll make it and two will never make it. So, I don't know. But they will surprise you in some way.
Can we vote on it next time?
Well, the marking period is coming up to a close. And we just, we want to be able to get it built into the process. And this is a pretty late date.
You would do it that quick? Like, whatever you vote on goes into effect immediately? You don't say, oh, we'll phase it in, like, at the half of your corner?
No.
Just a vote starting now.
But it's, but we've never talked about getting rid of it.
Yeah.
So if we voted to get rid of it, it would not exist.
But if it makes it in the paper, we talk about it next time. I think a lot of people-
So what if we tried to think of a way to get from where I think a lot of people want to be, which is getting rid of it? How can we, can we build in another, an open forum? Can we build in a way of getting feedback?
Yeah.
A vote? Can we?
But we still need something to fill the void.
No, no. Nancy, I think what Nancy's saying is to let folks know.
Oh, yeah.
So that we're not doing this bait and switch thing that people are all worried about.
But I don't think you can do that without having something to fill the void.
No, no, no. I think, I'm sorry.
Keep that in, do we have a plan?
So we're going to have this forum?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if you're asking them what to fill the void.
Well, you have time until the next marking period is over to determine what that is, right? Or you want to have something in place before you eliminate?
Or somebody, because if you, if you take that away from them and there's nothing to show achievement or that they can, you know, hang on the wall or something, it's going to be a problem.
But Michael could go to those people and say, come up with something.
So maybe it stays as it is until we- Or, I mean, if we vote this and that, doesn't mean it needs to stay for any length of time. It could stay for this marking period. And we could switch it up the next one.
It could be too, well, I'm not saying because it's a great year. That's difficult to go-
And it's a little frustrating for people to say, okay, here's our new system. Oh, and three months later, it's gone. Yeah. Why would anyone put in a new, whole new system and then get rid of it? I think, I think we should either stick with it as it is with the plan to get rid of it down the road. Or, that's what I think we should do.
I don't know.
I will play on for a half hour. So.
The challenge about sticking with what we have now is that every, every middle school has a different one. And we're coming within with the same report card. So, a Stowe parent might make the honor roll, whereas a Lancaster-
But if it's only one more try, it's not-
Well, what's the deal? Right.
I mean, what are you saying is you might have a recall.
I don't know. I just don't like the idea of saying, here's our whole new system.
And now here's another one.
And now, and now it's gone.
Yeah.
Because it, it's-
And we're over and just-
It doesn't show very thoughtfulness on our part.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind getting rid of it for the next cycle if we had something in place that said, okay, this is the new thing. But that would be the principals or something to come up with.
So, it sounds like what might be a motion that you would like to pass is to keep the current model for this year. And to task the middle school principals and administrators and educators to work on student recognition.
Can we do it with the council?
What's that?
Can we do it with this council advisory?
I think that, I think they'd do it with lots of different groups. But yes, absolutely. To come up with student recognition model. Criteria, because again, I think to have some identity within each school, if we had criteria, each school could have a different, some different approaches. Because some schools already have a pretty embedded and they haven't had to change.
Let's, I'm not to open a whole mouth, but what are the differences?
Between Sawyer and-
Yeah, Sawyer and-
Some average the grades, some use just the grade itself.
Some do-
Some average grades, so.
And then some-
And some just use the grade. And it's different how they treat related arts.
I don't think we should make this decision because of our computer system. Yeah, we really don't.
Oh, for the middle school, we're fine.
For high school, you mean?
Yeah.
Well, the positive-
I mentioned the middle school.
Oh.
Yeah.
But we're not.
We're not.
Okay. The nice thing about sort of postponing this decision until we've really been able to do it is then we can keep the high school and the middle school in the same-
Pathway.
Same schedule.
Good point.
Yeah.
So if we're not, not making any changes to the high school until effective next September, we can do the same for the middle school and give us however many months to sort of- Let all those ideas kind of fly about getting rid of it.
Rather than put the interim solution in place.
Right.
But do you want to wait that long? Or do you want to have the principals start working on it so that?
Well, it'd take the rest of the year to build, build the student recognition system.
So, I'll throw a motion out there, see how this flies. I move that we keep the middle school honor roll systems that are all in place currently for the remainder of the year while commissioning the administrators in each building to come up with a comprehensive student recognition program effective next September.
In replacement of-
The current. Do we need to say that? Okay, in replacement of the current.
I don't think we should say that. Because we don't know what they're going to come up with yet.
Right, okay. Because it could just be the right-
I'd rather just leave it the way I said it.
Yes. I second that.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
So Karen, you're?
Oh, wait.
You're four.
You're four. So we had two opposed?
Yeah, these two.
Six to two.
Okay.
So there was no wording included in there about eliminating the honor roll in the future, right?
Correct.
But there's, do you want people to know if there's a possibility?
Oh, I would love people to know there's a possibility, yeah. I mean, we didn't make a decision on that, but-
Right, right.
Definitely, it's a discussion. Yeah.
So, what do we call them, these alternate achievements? Alternate recognition?
You said student recognition is what I said. We didn't say we're not just student recognition.
Can you have a hand?
You have a hand.
Oh, sorry.
You only voted to keep the middle school the same. Are you going to keep the high school the same?
The high school wasn't on the table.
It wasn't on the table. Okay.
Okay.
That's a decision.
Kind of.
It's kind of, yeah.
No, we wanted to look at the dates.
Dee, we just wanted to talk about dates. And Lorraine, did you have specific Wednesdays that she said were good?
She said-
Who knows if they still hold water or not?
No, because I talked to her again today.
Oh, okay.
Just to say, we have a meeting tonight, are you sure? And she said, okay, so eleven twenty-two is the Saturday.
That's out.
Twelve thirteen is a Saturday. Twelve ten, wait a minute. I don't know, no, yeah, twelve ten and twelve seventeen, but one of those is our meeting.
Triton with ten.
So if we wanted to do a Wednesday night, the only time we could do it would be twelve ten.
Yep.
Is that the Triton meeting?
It's a Triton, but- It's a Triton, but...
Triton Saturday.
What time does she do it on Saturday?
Thank you for coming. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you for your...
Thank you.
Oh, so can she do it first thing in the morning?
Yeah, except for those of us who were Kathy and me.
On Saturday?
Oh, Saturday? Oh, yeah, she would do that.
I thought so too.
She was really accommodating.
But he was not one of them.
She must know we need help.
That's not shit.
It's not.
What are we talking about?
We're talking about this, the date that they date the workshop, that we can do it the 10th or so December 10th is...
So we're not going Triton?
I don't know. I don't know how to do this because we're never going to find a date in December.
Right, you guys got it.
You gotta pay it out. 13, 20, 27 booked. But I totally believe that you guys...
I just came through and I'd rather do a Saturday, but that's because of my own selfish schedule and if everyone else can't, then I understand that and I don't have to be there.
Oh, no, you're all gung ho and if you're going to be there.
No, I'm gung ho and I'll hear from you guys, but...
Well, I know if you can't go on the 10th, 10th, that's that's a bummer.
It's my last trip of the season.
All right, I think we'll go back to the idea of Friday, I'll get possible dates and throw them out in an email to everybody and no discussion involved, just when can you show up?
Right.
On the following options.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Little r to avoid discussion.
Little r, reply just to you, not to the whole group.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Reply just to me, yes.
So are you trying to November at all or is this in December?
December first is next week.
December 1st is next...
Week after next, yes.
Next week is Thanksgiving.
I don't think we can go Thanksgiving week. I personally can't.
No, she said no, she said no.
I, yeah.
You can't, no.
Yeah, Thanksgiving week's tough.
December's hard too.
December's really hard too, absolutely. That's but we all decided this was we wanted to do it soon, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to do it Saturday? The Saturday?
You can't do it the Saturday.
You can't do it the Saturday. We can't post it in time.
You have to have 48.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, so it's Thursday.
We have forty-eight.
But you're not talking to it until Friday morning.
Morning.
So show of hands, just so that I know this.
Because it includes Saturday.
You went out and posted by five tonight for Saturday.
How many people can make it on Saturday, the 13th?
It is my 45th birthday on Saturday.
Oh, you just said the whole tri area.
I expect cake.
Okay.
I'm fine, just listening in after you.
Awesome. Then how many people can make it on Wednesday, the 10th?
I'd rather do that than Triton.
You're not going Triton?
I think you're more important than Triton.
Okay, so bottom line, Lorraine, you got to change your calendar.
You got to tell them quiet. And they're a big one.
Well, maybe she has maybe not a Wednesday maybe.
Maybe we could do a Tuesday night.
Yeah, Wednesday trip.
Can you do...
I'm not really comfortable.
Well, I mean, could you do a Tuesday or Thursday on the other side of that?
Of that? I could of the 10th, 11th, 12th?
Yeah.
Okay, I could do, or that would be the 9th. Let me look at the calendar. I can do the 9th. I can do the 8th.
Well, okay. All right. Can we move on? Okay. Policies for second reading. Oh, Kara.
Oh, Kara.
Yeah, we didn't really make...
We didn't make it?
Any changes, so if...
No changes.
No changes.
Wow.
There were some type of typographical, but no subsequent.
Yeah, there wasn't anything.
I added a partner to the domestic.
Oh, yeah, we added a partner to the domestic.
Okay.
So we take them as a group?
I was just going to say, who wants to make a motion and let's do them all at once?
I make a motion to approve. Do I need to list each one of them?
You can say policies as listed.
Policies as listed in the agenda.
All of all those in favor? It's unanimous. Correspondence.
Oh, you have to go.
I have correspondence and we've already talked, there were two correspondences in our packets that were related to the honor roll discussion that we just had and they were both here and we heard from them, so I think those are covered. I had an item of correspondence regarding the future of the old tennis courts at...
There's a large group of people out in the hallway for that.
Oh, let's bring them in.
Really?
Yeah.
Are we going to have time to do other correspondence after this?
Yeah, we have to.
Yeah, we have to.
Okay.
Just say no, the unwaited you came, please don't let it break today.
In the high school.
Put a few in.
That's the issue.
Welcome, everybody.
How you doing?
Good. We're a little bit off schedule, but not too bad. Sorry to keep you waiting. I didn't actually know you were all here. So we're in our correspondence part of our agenda and I was just sharing with everybody that I had received a piece of correspondence regarding the use or the future use of the old tennis courts at the high school. And I'm a little puzzled as to how this has gotten to be the issue it has because I didn't know that there was a proposal out there to do anything with the tennis courts yet.
I would...
I'm glad there is, so you're saying you had yesterday.
No, I'm like me, I didn't know until someone contacted.
I'd like a little edification as to why this is coming up as it is.
Actually, my name is Chip Hart. I'm here representing with the rest of the concerned citizen. I don't, maybe there isn't a proposal, but is there thought about what to do with those courts?
Absolutely.
Right, okay, so that's why we're here. You know, and so I want to first of all say thank you very much. It's nice, I know that there's a public forum section of this school committee, but it's very nice to be able to have the opportunity to be able to publicly address this. As residents of Green Road, we're very concerned about any potential repurpose of the tennis courts for a variety of reasons, but specifically about a parking lot. By the way, it was very nice enough to host a walk-through where we took a look at the site and we talked about potential different options. Repurposing the tennis courts into a parking lot is a real concern for us. One of the potential proposals even included, yeah, now it would be a third entrance into the high school farther up Green Road. You know, I think we live on a daily basis with and we knew it moving in because it's a school, you know, we're close to a school, but we live with, you know, an amazing amount of inexperienced young drivers driving way too fast. The idea that we're going to increase parking for those people and actually increase the traffic flow is something that is very, very deeply concerning to our neighborhood, especially for somebody who is in close proximity like I do and has very young kids that like to ride their bikes and that. So I guess that's where we're coming from. I didn't have anything else other to say, but just to let you know that we're very concerned about this. There are other things that we talked about, it could be a deck hockey court, you know, again, I have thoughts on that as well, but that's where we're coming from.
Can I just throw something out? Why is there a meeting in Bolton with Bolton residents who were concerned without us knowing about it? That's bizarre, like as a courtesy, I didn't know anything about it.
So I met Mr. Hart, had asked us to meet with them and to walk through them. This is an operational consideration, we're building our capital plan. So the residents wanted to meet with us to talk about what we're what our thinking was, so we walked the parking lot.
So how big was the group that met?
This group, about 10 folks.
I know, we can, we can...
Police and fire was there?
Police and fire was there, yeah.
So the police, the fire, you folks, a bunch of residents, and none of us were told about it, especially the two people that represent the town. Just for the future, please give us the courtesy. Okay, that's all.
I don't know if I...
What's that?
How did the residents even find out?
I don't know. That I don't know.
No, I'm glad they did.
There was no plan, you said.
Honestly, I missed the meeting last I knew there was basketball courts.
Michael, what was the piece of paper you were having in your hand the whole time we were out there that I never got to look at?
That was just the parking lot plan that we had for when we did the plan.
Why are you telling us there was a plan for 60 cars and an interest on it? There's no plan out there.
It's not that one. Because we've started to look at the options that we have to...
Those laws weren't in what you said to us. This came out of an internal discussion, to my knowledge, between Bill Clary, our director of facilities, and the Bolton Public Safety people, based on a meeting that we've had in the past about overall problems with the high school parking. We were summoned to the fire department last sometime.
Yeah, last June.
Because they are unhappy about some of the parking situations at the high school and we talked about various mitigations that they would like us to take and we came to some agreements amongst ourselves and them, which I think we showed you the other day, with fire lanes, stuff like that. But then Bill continued to explore some discussions, talking to the local government about further things we could do to mitigate. One thing that was discussed, really a few different times over the last few years, but never to the point of a proposal or seriously, I mean, we discuss things all the time, what we might do, what could do, would this work, whatever. What is this parking lot? Somehow word got out that it was a feat to complete, it hasn't even been proposed for funding or anything like that. I mean, there are absolutely no plans or anything like that, to my knowledge. If they are, they're in the back of a napkin. When we left the meeting... Can I finish my statement? Go ahead. So when we discussed these plans with the Bolton Public Safety people, they were encouraging him to continue the plan. So he mentioned them, you know, in internal meetings about something we could consider going forward. But there's been no proposal, there's been no engineering, there's been no evaluation of any in any way beyond that. I mean, it was really just an internal discussion. So we had large meetings all the time on everything we discussed internally, I think we've had a lot of large meetings. Certainly, if we were going to go forward with it, or if we do go forward with it, I'm sure there will be a presentation as to why it works and what the benefits are and what the negatives are. Certainly, if you live next to a large facility like the high school, I certainly understand your reasoning for, you know, wanting to discuss what's going on. At the same point, you live next to a large facility like the high school, things are going to change there occasionally. And this was an idea that a number of people were talking about internally, not even at our level, internally in the school district. You know, I'm not even sure... You know about, to be honest with you.
But it's not their fault that some word got out.
It's not their fault, but I mean, but it wasn't like it was about to happen.
Right. And it wasn't a policy issue. We shared a meeting with them.
Right.
As I explained to them.
We understand that, but again, you know, it is much better to be proactive in our in our reasoning. And, you know, you're right, we all chose to live near a large facility and there are pros and cons to that. But you are talking about potentially bringing traffic into a neighborhood, okay, whether it's baked or not. You're talking about bringing traffic into a neighborhood, you're talking about having to light if it's going to be up the code, it's going to have some sort of lighting. The way that is now, and we keep talking about the old tennis courts, those tennis courts are used, they're used quite heavily. I live in close proximity to them. Residents use them, there are retired gentlemen that go there every single morning, baked or used. And when I believe when we sat through the proposal for the new field and everything like that, the word or the terminology was, you know, these courts will be for town use. So, you know, we are trying to be very proactive about it because it has significant negative impact on our road, our entire road. And so, you know, we're here to tell you, end mass, we don't want it.
I would have to say as a resident of Green Road as well, I live just on the other side of the old cemetery, so I live at 52 Green Road. I've been there for over 20 years. I would have to say certainly things have changed over the years, but I can tell you the intersection of Forbish Mill Road and Green Road and 117 is a nightmare. I think one of the things you should think about is creating a single entrance to the high school, probably further down across from the post office, even if the state needs to put up traffic lights.
Absolutely.
You get the traffic focused in an area, there's a grassy old area in front of the high school, have a circle built that way, and you keep the traffic contained because the more you move traffic up Green Road, it just creates, it's just a nightmare.
And we had discussed that ad nauseam, actually, to try to get some control over that. Because it is a state road, which is why it was helpful to have the town administrator there to explain that, there's very little we can do. We've had, since I've been here, conversations with DPW about inserting a light there and there's just unless we put a preschool there, we're not going to get any kind of traffic light there, that's just not something that we can have happen.
So as it is over the years...
No, I totally agree.
As the facilities have been developed in the back, it used to be very dark in my backyard, but when there's an athletic facility going on, those lights are pretty bright. Those spotlights shine through, that's fine, no big deal, and that's where things change over the years. But bringing more traffic onto Green Road is not the right idea because I can tell you last night, because I knew I was going to be here tonight, as I was coming home, there were about 15, 20 cars, there was an event going on last night, yeah, about 15, 20 cars parked on Green Road right at the very beginning on both sides of the road, which by the way, I don't know how a hard truck would ever get up there. So I decided I'd drive through, you know, Bolton, on the showback parking lot, there's plenty of open spots. People don't bother driving into the facility to park their car, they just dump it on Green Road and walk into the facility. So there's no management of the traffic flow. You know, just creating annex parking for unusable tennis courts is not the answer.
And that was raised, and that was a valid point that I think at our at our walk-through that was raised, and that's a valid point that we need to look at. And I'm not sure how we're going to look at it, but we have to look at managing the parking.
So was that what you mean by Bill Clary building plans and recommendations to address traffic flow and parking concerns?
Correct.
And that's really all we're going to do.
And that's not typically, and I appreciate what you said, Lorraine, but I'd have to tell you, I've had other meetings with parents about various topics that I wouldn't typically, when it's operational, when it's building the budgets, that we would not bring school committee members involved in that.
Well, that's fine, but I think that, and I thank you, Wors Joel, thank you for letting me know because I didn't know anything about this and I think as a courtesy, when a group as large as this has a concern, that we should be included in that or at least be made aware. But I am so thankful that you contacted me and anyone who has a concern, please contact us or contact me. Nancy feels the same way, but for you to have set up a meeting and not let us know, and I don't want to derail this conversation with this, but I would just as a courtesy like to know if there's going to be that type of an event, a planned event with citizens in this town regarding anything having to do with the school district.
And stuff like this, doesn't we post it?
No, because it's a management meeting. We're there collecting information for budget purposes.
So I hope it was clear that there wasn't a proposal and we hadn't heard anything.
When we left the meeting with him, the last words out of Michael's mouth were, we'll take this as an advisement and we're breaking ground in the spring. Everyone heard that? That is absolutely not true.
I mean, that is true, but you did indicate to us that the tennis courts as they are are not going to be.
That is correct.
That's likely.
Okay, so the idea that there's not a proposal or that we're not, you know, you absolutely did indicate to us that, and it was either going to be a parking lot or a deck hockey court and I, you know...
Basketball combination.
It's valuable, it's a valuable piece of land. We are going to repurpose that area.
We don't need eight tennis courts, we built five more tennis courts inside, that's why we repurposed it.
I understand. You know, the original plan, the original plan would be repurposed, correct me if I'm wrong, those, the tennis courts that are there now are supposed to be redone, right?
Actually, there was, one of the proposals, there were three proposals, one of the proposals had it being repurposed into a basketball court. That was the one I was aware of. And then there was another one where another proposal in which this did not happen, but it was a proposal at one point, that there was going to be a weight training facility built there. That did not happen. And then was there a third?
I think we missed one last time.
I think just those two.
I think the third was they were going to put the five, try to put the five courts over there. It was, that was in one.
We didn't look at that very early on.
So at this point, as far as we knew, as far as this committee of eight of us around this table, that was the last we had ever heard of this discussion. So in my mind, I'm thinking it's going to turn into basketball courts because the building didn't happen. So I don't know, and in my opinion, a basketball court is fairly unoffensive. I mean, it's not all that different than a tennis court, it's not going to be driving tons of traffic down Green Road for an outdoor basketball court. But I just want to be clear that there was no other hidden agenda, at least on the part of eight of us around this table.
I don't think we do. And, you know, yeah, I mean, certainly, and I don't want to speak for the group, but as I hear, you know, a, you know, a basketball court is much more preferable to a, you know, a parking lot, but again, you know, it depends on how you do it, you know, if there's going to be lights and they're going to be on during the night, that's not...
Okay. Yeah, I mean, whatever we do, whatever the current codes are, we'll have to be following.
I mean, there's tennis courts and there's no lights, so I don't know why if it became basketball, it'd have to be lights, but... basketball, there'd have to be lights, but.
Well, no, I, look, I'm just trying to be proactive, you know, there's a lot at stake for the residents of Green Road.
But why isn't still the problem with parking, additional parking spaces required?
Our addition, yeah, one of the things, one of the things we, I think we all agree on is that there's too much parking on Green Road within our events, and whatever we do, we wanna get that parking off that road.
So, is it because there's no parking, or is it because they're parking there to get to the event?
Well, as we discussed, we, you know, the nature, the human nature of people coming to events, they're gonna try to find where they think is the closest proximity to the entrance of whatever they're coming to.
Yeah, the question is, do you have enough parking space? Is the ability to get more parking spaces?
There is a goal to get more parking spaces.
For students, right? Not events.
Well, both.
But the majority of the events is ample parking in the student parking lot. People, that parking lot is usually fairly empty, people choose to park on Green Road because it's closer to the entrance.
But isn't that a town issue, like the towns need to put up something in the town's ticket, and then people stop parking?
Well, that's.
I mean, the town, the town puts up signs all the time before events.
We need to get them to manage that, so that that can happen. And part of that might be some details.
Was the purpose of putting the artificial surface in the back to attract more events not related to the school system?
Yes.
Or was it to cut maintenance costs in terms of maintaining the property that was there? That's a big difference, because if we're trying to put more parking there to attract more non-school-related events, then that's a different issue.
Right. So, it was to cut maintenance, but the reality is, to pay for it, there are, it's to our benefit to rent it out. It's a good source of income to them. But I think there are, like anything, you have to take a multi-dimensional approach to solve the problems that we're having. I think we all agree, we wanna get traffic reduced off Green Road, we wanna get the parking reduced off Green Road, and we have to figure out best solutions to do that. That's part of this puzzle. The other part is, we're also trying to look at the flow of traffic into the school, which is the entrance issue, and trying to look at ways to eliminate the mixing of pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic, and bus traffic, because that's very complex, and as anybody who tries to drop off a student there in the morning, or pick one up in the afternoon, it's horrendous. And so, part of the solution, and this will be a step process, I'm sure, because I'm sure whenever you start talking about pavement, you're talking about large dollars, and so, it's gonna be a step process. So, nothing necessarily will get done all at once, it'll have to be over time, because that's the way we're gonna be able to afford it.
Aside from managing, traffic, and the parking, how did you come to the conclusion that you needed more parking, and how do you know how to do it?
Well, the conclusion is that when we have the spring for the students, we can manage this, but when we have parking for the students in the spring, they're all over the place. So, we have a piece there that we wanna look at and make decisions about.
Are they all over the place because there's no parking, or they're all over the place because they don't wanna park far away from school?
All the parking permits are sold out.
All the parking permits get sold out.
They're sold out.
So, we have roughly 218 parking permits, and, you know, you have, between junior and senior class, you're gonna have upwards to 400 kids that are gonna wanna drive. So, we're not gonna find 400 parking spaces, that's, I'm just using a head number, but, you know, that's the reality.
I mean, I'm not heartbroken that not everyone gets a parking space.
Right. Right. Decisions have to be made. But the reality is that, in most cases, when we have parking, whether it's in the front of our school, or on Green Road, or down on 117, it's because there's not enough parking on site.
For example, open house.
Open house is crazy, yes.
And there's announcement after announcement, if you're parked on Green Road, please go to your car and.
Exactly.
During open house.
And they're not always effective.
And maybe we should manage openly differently?
Yeah, I mean, there are different things that we can do, that we'll have to look at. But I think, again, none of these are the multipurpose solutions, we're gonna have to look at multi-parties, we're gonna have to look at police, we're gonna have to look at the town, we're gonna have to look at ourselves, and ask ourselves, how do we manage this so that we can be better neighbors with our neighbors, and bring safety to our kids?
When we talk about this, and I don't wanna get in the weeds, and I think we've accurately conveyed our point, our concerns, and I'm confident that you understand them, but when we talk about certain, like, one of the things we just kept around is with the high-event parkings, you know, the DPW at night, for instance, has got a huge amount of space. That would require, you know, a policeman, you know, on Green, on 117. Is that something that Bolton has to fight? I mean, it's a regional town, so could we enlist Lancaster and Stowe's police to be up there? I mean.
But we paid the detail, so it's part of our budget.
Yeah.
And that's something that they do. So, all towns are contributing.
They do that at Maynard High School, they park them across the street, and they up cross from 117.
What about if it's an event that's like, not our event?
Then those people get charged. And we require, we require, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Does anybody have a concern, I mean, you know, there's the pizza shop that the kids go to all the way, I mean, I would think that the people would have been crying for some sort of.
Crosswalk? Crosswalk, they've been trying to get a crosswalk for years.
And what's, just to educate us, what's the, why, I mean, I can't imagine a state with a safety issue.
There's a, there's a, there's a four traffic regulations they have to go by.
Right.
Sight lines, things like that, I don't know all the specific details.
The speed of the road is a factor.
There's very specific, there's very specific details they have to follow to prove crosswalks. Where it starts from, or where it leads to, and things like that, all that goes into it, and it doesn't, doesn't meet those regulations.
I mean, we just, the police and safety have come down and said they don't recommend one. I've said, I really don't want one there, and encourage kids, unless we can meet all these other requirements, lighting, some kind of yellow light, maybe a red-yellow, a red-yellow-green light, and they just, you know, you can't meet it.
I understand, I, your curiosity, it just seems to make a lot of sense.
I know, this.
It does.
It does make perfect sense. But I understand, and I still haven't heard a confirmation of this, but there has been some transition to, or plan to transition, more responsibility to the state for 117. And I just don't know what the length of the jurisdiction will be.
There's forever been discussion of possibly, and I know this sounds crazy, but I've seen a bridge walkway.
We have talked about that, yes.
Under.
Yeah, we've talked about it.
Because it's just, I just find that it's gonna be, everyone knows it's a problem, and it'll be really sad if something has to happen.
And it's gonna take that one kid getting hit.
And I think whatever the state is, this is one of those times where you have, in a regular situation, you have a high school that holds a small-town-sized community of teenagers in it, with a pizza shop across the street. At some point, laws and regulations, state guidelines and stuff, have to go out the window, and common sense just has to prevail, in my opinion.
If I could paint it myself, I would, but.
Maybe the Eagle, maybe an Eagle Scout project, some sort of engineering bridge to just go across the road. But that doesn't, that doesn't solve the entrance and exit, I realize that, that's another issue.
Well, just your turnout alone is impactful. Obviously, it's an important issue to you, as it is to me, and.
Come tomorrow.
We've had the best turnout tonight.
Yeah, this is remarkable, we haven't had this many people in a long time, and I mean, but that speaks volumes for what you stand for and how much you care about it, so thanks for coming.
Thank you. Sorry you had to wait so long.
So, there is no plans to do anything with the tennis court?
The next phase will be.
I guess I'm just questioning, what would we hear if we need to show up again?
So, we said we would get back in touch with you, we build a scheduled maintenance plan every year, and we will be back in touch with you and get you organized again, make it public, so that everybody can come, because at this point, it will be the public way there. It'll be part of our scheduled maintenance, we'll probably do it in advance of the budget proposal, so you can see what options we're looking at. So, I'd say, early January, probably.
We don't have to vote on it to approve it, so.
Yeah.
It'll be a part of the budget, right?
Just do news movements.
Because assuming, no matter what the resolution is, it will cost some dollars.
Right.
So, that will mean it has to be approved by the committee.
I hear the price of Arsenal is going way up.
You don't want that section of the budget.
I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
I think we just took care of citizens' comments.
Lauren had other correspondence. Yes. Neil Darcy had been working with Michael, and Joel, and Dr. Fitzpatrick, and the state, whoever the woman is.
About the public health.
Yes, about the tick and bug spray issue, and I saw an email come through from Joel saying, we're now gonna have this protocol where, if you wanna spray your child, so after like, months of getting, trying to get this done, so I sent him an email and said, oh, congratulations, it was done, this is why you wanna stay involved, because he was concerned. He wrote back and said, yes, but the problem is, that he wanted it added to the blue health forms at the beginning of the school year that we fill out, so you can check the box, will you allow your child to have Tylenol, blah blah blah, at school, and then the bug spray would be on there, but that's not how it's working. How it, supposedly how it's working is, you have to go in and speak with the nurse, and have a conversation, so it creates more work for the parent than rather just checking a box to say, yes, I'll allow my child to spray.
Can it be a checkbox next year? Is the problem that it's too late in the year?
No, I think the problem is that, well, from Neil's perspective, his concern is, why are we making it more difficult when it could just be simply added to the form?
I think one big piece of it, and I did get some discussion about this, is there's at least two teachers that the kid spraying bug spray will trigger, and this is just two people I've talked to, trigger them into a big asthma attack.
Sure.
So, something we really need to, and I'm sure if that happens to one teacher, it probably happens to ten kids. And so, it needs to be very controlled, down the nurse's office, and I get the concern, but we also live in New England, you check your kid, you check yourself for ticks, it just.
Well, no, I'm not arguing any point, I just wanna make sure I'm bringing forward multiple correspondences and outreaches, and if that's the reason why, that's the reason why, but.
I don't know what that is, but I know.
But I mean, that's what I was pointing, that's what I was pointing.
And he's misinformed about the other part. When you take, when a young child, K through A, checks off that they can administer, those are still administered.
Nurse's office. Yeah, I mean, I, my seventeen-year-old can't just take two Advil out of his pocket and take it in high school.
But then, but that's not the issue, the issue.
So, why can't they check it?
Oh, I check it, but he has to go down the nurse to get it.
So, why can't they check it on the blue form?
Because we haven't revised, this just happened, we haven't revised the form, but we'll revise the form for next week.
Okay, so for next.
But that's not the description that he was, that's not the description that we received in our email from Joel.
Well, for this year.
Right, for this year, it's gonna be a little different, because we haven't.
Because all the blue forms are.
No, 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 okay, so does that mean that it will be on the blue form?
I'm assuming it will be, I, I had that specifically, this is the first time I'm hearing this, so I need to have the conversation with Donna, but I would assume it would, because it's all there, and that's what the purpose of that section of the form is, but.
Don't you need a note from your pediatrician for any non-prescription medication, though?
No.
So, we get, we get the note for over, that was the whole issue that he raised, which was a valid, you know, we wanna be able to be meaningful resources to parents. We needed to get that permission for over health, over the counter drugs by our school physician, develop a protocol, and that's where this piece about spraying in close proximity. But like always, and I've said this to Mr. Darcy, you know, as a parent, you, for the most part, for the six-and-a-half-hour day, there are sprays that will last that long for, for during the day.
And also, the sunscreen piece is another part. My kids are outside how long, fourteen minutes? You put it on at seven o'clock in the morning, they're not getting sunburned in the fourteen minutes they're outside.
His concern is kids, and I don't have a problem with that, I really think that that's okay, but I think, Michael, if you, what you said was, I like that you said, we're not sure if, I.
Yeah, let me ask that question.
Yeah.
I just assumed we would when we revised the form.
Do love a check. Because the process is not what was described in the newsletter, and it wasn't for now, and later on it will be added.
Right, right.
So, you're gonna check that and let it go next time?
Thank you.
Michael has to make sure that it's gonna be in the blue form next year, or clarify that it's gonna be in the blue form next year.
That's our next step.
Great, thanks.
That's our action.
Any other correspondence?
I got it.
Any other correspondence? No, I think all we need is the final motion.
I have a question.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Lynn.
When he was talking about the management piece, the guy that was here earlier, from Kessler.
Mm-hmm, Kessler.
He talked about an inventory of assets, and he said that we had hired somebody, the reason that he thought we were gonna talk about everything is because we had hired somebody in 2014 to actually collect all those assets, so we did never had a list of assets.
We've always had some sort of list of asset, there are different kinds of assets, so the things that they did were all of the big things over, what, $5,000?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
There's a, there's a accounting list of assets that we need, you know, to comply with the laws, and the big GASP regulations, and things like that, that's what we have to consult and do. I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to.
No, I'm talking about physical assets.
We have a list of physical assets, some of them are more complete, like by the said, others, for example, our computer equipment, we have a list of every asset in the entire place, and we can tell you exactly what it is. We do not have a list of how many desks we have, student desks we have.
No, actually, I'm more concerned about, you know, mechanical equipment.
Yeah, and that's what Bill's building, it's gonna have completely built, but we're talking about mechanical equipment, like pumps and motors and things like that, Bill's building, yeah, Bill's building that.
What's the problem, I don't know specifically.
So, it's a long-term project.
Yeah, and he's been on it for a while, we keep bringing it up.
He's like, oh, he's been building, you know, stands and things like that, so, he is working on it. I mean, if he hasn't, it's part of his general maintenance plan, and, you know, that type of thing, actually, you know, putting the paper, we have one, you know, 2,002 50-gallon pump in this location, I don't think we're quite there yet.
I mean, it's just, because we don't have extra manpower to do it, we do it as we replace and work with the equipment.
I mean, he is making a process of trying to make it, you know, but we certainly do it like that, but.
And operationally, and I appreciate your interest in it, Lynn, but frankly, it's not something that we need to do to get our work done. It just, it isn't.
But it's a good tool, when you're talking about capital projects.
It can be informative.
And for the budget, because it lets you know that certain equipment is coming up, maybe stop looking at it.
Right, and so, we have, he has the big systems, and that's really where the capital projects will come from. So, the boiler.
He has a five-year capital plan, so I mean, to that extent, he's analyzed the track.
And he's basing the five-year capital plan on?
On the systems.
System, the system conditions, system performance, system age, that type of thing. You know, it's only breaking down all the time, clearly, we spend more attention on that than something that doesn't right now, but I think he has a pretty good handle on the overall capital situation, no, nothing's perfect, I wouldn't tell you that it is, you know, if, you know, if we opened up last year, and we were starting procedures in the beginning, we might do it a little differently. We opened up 50 years ago, and, you know, we make adjustments as we go, but I think we're in pretty good shape. Perfect? No. Pretty good? I think so.[1747.12]